Alright, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the to the main eighteenth town Poughkeepsie planning board meeting for twenty twenty-three, I should say. Town Poughkeepsie planning board meeting and please join me for the pledge. Thank you, everyone. We got a decent agenda again tonight. Get right into it. First up in the Vassar College admissions building.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm Marion Bagman. I'm Dean of Strategic Planning and Academic Resources at Vassar.
And Ken Casamato from LRC.
And we're going to keep our opening remarks very short. You're all pretty familiar with the project. We've been here twice before and you've seen it outside of that those contexts as well. We've received some really great questions and comments from everyone. I think we've addressed the technical details. Already, the couple of major things I just wanted to mention that or maybe more major that I wanted to mention that we have addressed as well. Last time we were here, there was a request for additional handicap parking spots. We've added a spot by the entrance of the new building. And we also had a request to convert one of the EV charging stations into a handicap spot. So we've made that change as well. Um, we've also worked with the town supervisor with with Mr. Basely and town council to finalize a parking agreement. And my understanding is that that has been if that's in the hands of the supervisor at this point in town in time. Um, for the use of the the north parking area by patrons and employees of the local businesses. Um, and also there was questions about the parking management plan and we have addressed those questions and uh, will be refiling a an updated uh, attachment or a new exhibit that goes with that plan. Nothing of the plan changes. Same triggers are in place, same number of parking spots, just a different um, site, essentially a site outline for the parking from the institute. So so that's uh, taken care of as well.
Right.
The only other brief comment would be about parking management plan is uh, in it, it states about the south parking lot during construction of this, we're using the uh, existing asphalt of the the tennis courts that are going to be removed as a base uh, to better keep vehicles for tracking for every purpose. It's just all around better for the project to use those areas. So that area will not be able to be used for the PMP parking. Uh, just during the short period of time of construction, in which case they'll use the south lot as we described in that parking management plan. Anyway, so they'll bust people up as needed according for the end and institute when that comes online.
Okay. It is how how long do you anticipate that the incoming online before the for this project?
There's timeline that's supposed to be.
The the institute is in the in the in are scheduled to be complete in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Uh, obviously, there'll be a little bit of time before we actually open that project for business, given that we have to do just training of staff and, you know, FFNE and punch listing and you know, making the whole building operational. So that will take some time after the spring of twenty twenty-four. So maybe summer.
Right. And our hope is to start this project by the spring of twenty twenty-four. So it's not that false overlap between the two.
Okay. The end of the day. Thanks. All right. This group is great to see that that model the last few times you're here.
So we've got it if you want to see it again. That's right. It's in my office, though.
Don't need it tonight again. So that was that was good. Eric?
Sure. Uh, excuse me. Uh, staff feels the project is ready for secret determination and also for a conditional site plan approval. Uh, you have both in your packets uh, for your review and consideration. Um, the as they mentioned, the increased handicap parking was provided as part of the question. Um, there was just today, we did receive a further clarification um, of the decision by the by the state historic preservation. Um, and uh, that clarified, we that clarified and confirmed that they looked at archaeology and there was no further requirement for review.
Okay, great.
So you have that that the the deck was a couple of sentences in the deck where we drafted for that purpose, which were sent to you this afternoon. Um, otherwise you have our comments. Have had out it.
Great. Thank you, Eric. See any remaining comments from engineering here, Andy?
Sure. Um, we had just one minor comment about the the maneuvering plan um, for the west lot, just asked if they coordinate with the fire department to make sure they're okay with that. We also had the rest of our comments um, were related to college view um, in terms of grading um, drainage and some fill that may may be proposed, but we feel that those those items can be addressed as conditions of of approval.
Okay, great. And I see Mark, you're on. You have a couple of last minute comments here.
Yeah, I have a few comments, nothing major, they're pretty minor um, things that could be probably addressed just as as conditions um, just related to signage. Um, but also the just um, some items missing on some of the plans as it relates to the uh, improvements on college view. Um, which could be addressed as conditions as well.
All right. At this time, I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
It was a second question. I was in favor.
I.
The post motion passes seven zero. And when I was to make any additional comments on the Vassar application. Hey, I guess I come on up. Take one seat out. Get the timer started and let us know your comments are.
Yeah, I'm showing up today because um, I've been muted rather consistently. So I hadn't been able to participate. Um, so I'm speaking about the Vassar administration plan. Um, it just want to start off with a quick story.
Michelle, can you state your name, your full name for us?
My full name?
Yeah.
Squires.
Okay.
Michelle.
Thank you.
Um, hypocrisy is something that really burns me. And um, my kids pointed out all the time when they see me being hip, you know, um, that hypocrisy coming from a parent. But my hypocrisy stays pretty much with me. And it's not applied to the entire community. So when it's applied to the entire community, I have a real issue. Um, here's the story. Uh, my my kid wasn't allowed to attend public school because it was a mismatch for the kind of education he needed. And his self-esteem suffered as a result of the matching machinations of the local school district to get him removed. So the idea was to make it all unsustainable for him so that he had to remove himself. But before that, he attended the children's media group. And um, he did a cartoon. The cartoon was about this kid that falls into a manhole. And he's screaming, help, help. And a an ambulance comes to help him and runs him over. So that is the hypocrisy that my kid kind of noticed. And uh, and and it wasn't too soon before I started to recognize myself that now we have water that dehydrates us. We have salmon that helps with weight loss. That's treated with chemicals that makes the fish fat. We don't know what it does to people. Pharmaceuticals that make you ill, doctors that kill you due to malpractice. Pesticides that destroy the guts of the pests and the humans that ingest the food and smart meters that are supposed to save you then save you money than instead add transient voltage that add about ten percent to your bill and lighting.
Michelle, can I ask what you know what this?
Yeah, and lighting and lighting to keep us safe that can blind you. So that's, you know, you just interrupt me at the point that I'm trying to make. And I have said that this lighting that not just Vassar is using, but that is used in our comprehensive plan. And it's not FDA approved. So the DOE and the FDA have something going on together. Where they're now making incandescent lighting rather difficult to purchase. I think in August, it's going to become illegal. And of course, who manufactures our LEDs? Well, China does. So you know, it's made our manufacturing, it's harmed our manufacturing, but it's going to keep us safe. And you drive on Route nine with all the construction going on and they have all the safety lights there. It blinds you to keep us safe. So that is the content of what I wanted to share. Um, and um, you know, unfortunately, the kicker is we have green universities that support geoengineering that poison our air, soil, and water. But they state that they take their trees very seriously. So the hypocrisy is just it's screaming at me right now. Please look into LED lighting, you know, and see if there are alternatives. You know, I don't know, folks. I didn't research into that, but the LEDs are not FDA approved and I don't think Vassar really wants to be associated with something that gives people seizures. It really does. There's somebody I know that's infected by LEDs and she gets seizures. So please, thank you very much, everybody.
All right. Thanks for the comments, Michelle. We I will say that we have the whole playing board has had classes on LED lighting and we we in our code, we wanted to keep it under the three thousand Kelvin. So it's at least because I don't understand it's very bright light. You look at some of the headlights are coming on you. People think feel like they have high beams on all the time. So they're they're above the three thousand Kelvin, usually the the brighter ones. So we try to keep our development projects in town to three thousand temperature and below. So it's a little bit warmer look at least. All right. Uh, anyone else on Vassar admissions building? Anyone online? It's like, no.
There's only one person I don't recognize on the Zoom MTA office. That's you? All right. All right. So then perfect.
In that case, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, called question. I was in favor.
I.
Post motion passes seven zero. Or on the board for last comments. Peter?
Everything appears to be in order.
Okay.
Everything's fine.
Okay. Stephen.
Uh, just one question. For the building, is there a peak season where uh, usage might be high because of visitors into the campus?
Yeah, so our uh, I I did look at the that information and the highest visitor rate to admission is in the summertime, actually. Uh, and then there's a period, as you can imagine, before students are making their decisions during Easter Easter break in the, you know, in April, but it's primarily the summertime.
Okay, thank you. No other comment.
Job.
Comments?
Have no comments.
Call.
No, I have no comments.
Yep, I've got nothing remaining. We've talked about a lot of things and uh, you've updated everything that to our satisfaction. So Mike Rex on there. It's up.
Remove the planning board determine that the Vassar College admissions building project will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. And that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in secure negative declaration for type one action dated May eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Moved consecutive for seeker, call the question. All those in favor?
I.
Post motion passes seven zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Vassar College admissions building project subjects of the following. Respond to the comments of the reviewing departments and agencies. Set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included up and that limited to one through nine.
Second.
Moved consecutive, called the question for conditional. All those in favor?
I.
Both motion passes seven zero. And you want to display architecture?
Yes.
It's like an efficient window there. Yep.
I can tell maybe I'll just lean that. Or really like range. That work? Can you? Can you hear me?
Yep.
That's a balance. I'm gonna have a hard time with these things. Um. So I'm Ben Myers from the architects office, Marian Thompson. Um, gonna try and keep this short and sweet because hopefully you all are very familiar with the building at this point. Um, here we have what ends up being the nine elevations of the building considering the shape. Um, as well as the materials, pretty simple palette. We have uh, thermally modified oak at the bottom, which is uh, the siding as well as, you know, all the uh, details of the building. Uh, Western red cedar. Which is uh, the underside of the soffits around the building. Larch, which is that lighter wood, which is the windows. Um. Metallic paint, which would be any of the steel elements. We have a series of just round columns in certain areas, steel columns. And then rhine zinc uh, patented metal standing seam roof. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, any questions?
What was the comment about? The first one is said it was.
It's a thermally modified oak. It's it's actually an amazing process where they bake the wood. And it makes it rock resistant, insect resistant, increases the longevity.
Okay. So it's real real wood instead of hardy, but.
Real wood, exactly. And then right over here, yeah, we brought.
Triple pane windows.
Yeah, so it's a triple pane windows throughout. Um, all wood, large windows. You can see on that side, that would be the exterior.
Energy efficiency.
Yes. First and foremost.
Right. As uh, any board members have comments on the architecture? Beautiful. It really likes it. I, okay, thank you. I move we accept the architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, it calls question. I was in favor.
I.
Most motion passes seven zero. All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right. Look. Look. You got a few projects going on to balance right now. Stop. It's the Mid Hudson Regional Hospital.
Good evening. My name is uh, Jerry Falby. I'm with uh, ETS Providence. We're planning a young firm. Uh, okay, why plan to have to uh, uh, pair, set a document for uh, uh, commit Hudson Medical Hospital to uh, do quite a bit of restoration on the front edge of your drive and her the helipad that they've got located there. On I can share a screen if that's okay.
Yeah, please do that.
Just maybe pull down the microphones a little bit. So you're speaking to them. That'll be great. Thank you. Did you see that?
Yep, yep. Okay, good. We got us.
Um, so you're familiar with the hospital. The the core campus is about twenty-eight acres in size. Um, access is from North Road, Route nine G. And the main driveway coming up to the uh, emergency department uh, where for the ambulance come through mostly up the main driveway. Which I I guess at one point may have been Barker Avenue. Um, and it's still labeled as such, and it continues through underneath the garage to the back at Garden uh, street extension. The um, the access we're talking about is actually in the front on from North Road up to the uh, up to the loading dock. And you can see on this uh, aerial here, uh, you can see where North North Road is. The darker red color indicates the project area that we're working in. Um, the road length, just to give you a sense of what that is, and I know you've got some of you guys have been out there. It's about five hundred and sixty-five feet from North Road to the center where that little island is. Uh, and that road, as you had noticed, is in pretty bad shape. I have some photos just to show you that. Um, and including up to the ambulance bay itself. So yes, it's tricky because it's an active hospital, uh, gets busy at times, right? And you've got the helipad coming in. So all those things in play. Probably the reason why it's been delayed for some time because nobody really wants to maybe tackle that, but it really needs to be done. And there are some modest improvements that we're also making in it that would benefit the hospital tremendously. Um, this is the area in question in terms of the pavement areas. So the total pavement restoration is about thirty seven to thirty-eight thousand square feet, uh, some of which will be uh, removed completely. There's complete failure in those areas. You can see up in the middle part of the roadway. Um, up on the top and in the bottom, it's not as bad if we wanted to do some milling. Uh, part of the problem that the road is failing because there's groundwater coming through. So we're going to going to intercept some of that water. And then bring it back in the drain where it should be going in the first place. Uh, the helipad itself has some issues. Structurally, it's okay, but the pavement's beginning to fail. Yep. So that'll be that'll be completely restored down to grade again. And then rebuilt in exact same place that it's today. Uh, and supporting the uh, the side slopes will will improve that as well. So these are some pictures just to give you a sense of uh, where we are. The front top right corner picture is at the North Road. That's the entrance to to North Road in the hospital there. And you can see some of the wear and tear on that location. On the left is the view looking up the uh, driveway. Uh, and I'll talk about the lights in a moment, but that is the existing light that's noted on that plan. Those are Central Hudson poles that were put up. Maybe when it was a road at that point in time and the lights were put up uh, and and they're maintained by Central Hudson. Uh, they're not as efficient as they should be with the newer lighting that we are proposing for the project. Um, again, on the left bottom left, this is looking down towards uh, North Road. Uh, just want to note on the picture there. I don't know if you can see the cursor, but yep, right here, there's a a small stoplight. Uh, about maybe six feet high. So when the helicopter helicopters come in, uh, the hospital engages that uh, light turns red. Uh, cars have to stop at that point. And then they can go after a certain period of time or have to drive slowly if it's blinking yellow. So that's how it's operated currently today. On the top right, you'll see this is the edge of the hell up there, looking at the ambulance bay in the laptop left corner of the photo. And basically, we're taking gurneys and and patients from there across the parking lot a little bit towards the uh, the ambulance bay. And right now there's a curb there, which is not uh, ideal. So you can see here where you're coming across the driveway. And then there's a curb, so you have to bring the gurneys all the way around the outside of the driveway and winter time ice and all that stuff. It's not an ideal situation. So I put this sort of greenish arrow and that's basically where we want to put the uh, an eight foot wide walkway uh, fully accessible so they can bring the gurneys down there. And and get access to that area to the back. Um, on the other part of the uh, helipad, and this is the driveway here where that circle of landscaping is. We're going to put uh, some fencing along here. Uh, just so that right now anybody can just walk right into the helipad. If the helicopters come down, then obviously it's not a good thing. Or people wander there and the helicopter is trying to get in and they're wandering on the pavement. So uh, it's not a security fence. It's more just keep deter people from walking into that area. Uh, and we also have a gate at the front of the driveway towards that helipad. So when they come in, they can open it up. And at times, I guess if the weather's bad, uh, they're also uh, bring the ambulance right up to the helicopter and then transport it right down to driveway to the to the uh, ambulance bay. Um. These are the lights. Uh, I think some of the comments that the the staff had provided, which were very helpful, by the way, uh, indicated we didn't have a a picture of what the light looked like. So we propose put these back on the plans for you guys. Uh, which shows the light mounting height about twenty feet to replace those wooden pole Central Hudson lights that are up there now. Uh, and these are very efficient LEDs. Uh, already heard your conversation about the the K value and uh, I don't have that answer tonight, but I I think I think you're right. The three thousand is is a softer uh, light pattern that we want to probably put here as well. So and then uh, there had been some comments about the uh, uh, the management of the construction and we totally understand that and definitely will have all meetings with this with the departments and agencies and art department. Uh, so everyone's on the same page in terms of how we're gonna, you know, do this work while it's under construction. First and foremost is that the main driver should stay open at all times. It may be down to one lane, but the idea is to have uh, flagmen around to allow the traffic to go back and forth. We also talked about perhaps uh, having all uh, visitors and so forth, go with the other driveway at the back of the building uh, where the parking is there anyway. Uh, and those things will be noted. But during during the active construction, the helipad, obviously the helicopter needs another place to go. So we put this uh, uh, plan in here to show uh, the concept that the hospital is looking at. We met with the uh, uh, the helicopter uh, uh, group that provides a service here. And they're on board uh, placing in a small area on the on the upper uh, parking lot, cordon off with with barriers uh, to allow the helicopters to land there. Then they bring a an ambulance, take the patient from there right to the hospital, either to the front or back to the ambulance bay, depending on the situation and where what timing of the construction is is going is happening at that point. So uh, this will be refined further with everybody's input. Obviously, the uh, the county will have to look at this as well. But you know, I think getting this established upfront is probably a good thing to do that. I appreciate all the input that the board has had. Um, I know you had a chance to go out to the site and I have a full set of plans, but I don't know what else you'd like to uh, understand if there's any questions you have certainly here uh, to go over that. Mike Braskis, he was a a program manager at Westerson Medical Center. He's in charge of this and you can answer any questions the hospital might uh, might have.
Think I'll have a couple of questions, but for we go to Kristen first for department's recommendation.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so as was noted, this is the applicant's first appearance before the planning board. It's on for seeker review. It is a type two action by uh, seeker. Um, handbook, uh, and it is on permanent site plan. Um, largely staff, staff comments related to the site plan review component um, are about and pertaining to just maybe more detail being provided within the plan set or also just um, programmatically, which I appreciate the explanation this evening. And again, I think just through some board discussion, we might be able to clear up some of the comments that I have asked the applicant to, you know, respond to. Um, that said, we will be looking for some of that in writing as well. Um, but uh, what most of my comment, um, and again, I just get stressed out hearing about what the element of a hospital has to to work through programmatically. Um, and also the fire department's in the room, so you're not getting away from them.
Lord, do we want to?
Uh, right. So um, just that communication through the construction phase saying, um, we also would be interested in seeing or hearing um, if there's an update from Department of Transportation. I'm not sure if that consultation has taken place yet. Um, or where you are at in that consultation, um, because you will be required to seek that highway work permit. Um, I do believe the county planning department has already issued a a matter of global concern. Um, that said, I probably would also just follow up and confirm that based on that sort of temporary location of the helipad in the interim while construction is taking place, I want to make sure that that's been made clear that that is taking place. Um, and they'll probably have questions about duration. Um, but that said, you know, the application, um, again, this is your your first appearance. Um, the applicant did uh, provide a public hearing notice uh, to the Poughkeepsie Journal, so it is on for a public hearing. Um, staff at this point would probably recommend that you would open and then adjourn the public hearing and then defer action with comments.
All right.
At this time.
Thanks, Kristen. Enjoying? Take a look, Dan.
Yeah, I see. So you answered several of my questions already. It does occur to me as far as the temporary helipad. Are there any FAA requirements that need to be adhered to for that temporary location as far as lighting or fencing or signage?
There are some. Elements they are, you're, you're right. We had met with the, the folks that would be managing that from the helicopter side of things and. They were there at the meeting and they understood the, the details of that. And my understanding is they would take care of that, but there is notification required, obviously. You know, so they'll do that.
So, so any of the, if there's temporary pavement markings, temporary lighting, probably should see that on the plans as well.
They didn't. Request any.
Okay.
I can verify that again.
Sure. All right, great. And then I guess my, you know, I'm glad to hear that there is actually a light that, that lets people know that, that, that there's helicopter landing and they need to stop. I think a pavement marking and maybe some signage to indicate what that light. Means might be wise unless it's already there.
Yeah, there is a, there's a sign there underneath the light and tells you, tells the driver what to do. And there's a. It's probably worn, but there's a white. Traffic line there that, that should be shown.
You would re.
Yeah, well, well, but I don't think it got on the plan, but we'll definitely get that back on.
Okay, great. And then finally, you know. Is there any intention of kind of revising the traffic layout around that island? It, it, it.
It's a lot.
Are very wide.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little confusing that traffic pattern there.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with you to, you know. It's for a regular driver would be confusing perhaps. So we are putting the arrows in there and make sure that they better understand that. I am a little reluctant to make the island bigger because. Trucks and buses going through there perhaps. But we talked about internally and maybe using crosshatching. Around the island to, to guide the driver. This is where he's supposed to go. So it'll. We'll have the room if we need it, but certainly the driver will have a better understanding what the drive path is.
Okay. I think we could work with.
Yeah, that's, that sounds like a good idea. Fire trucks can still handle.
Yeah, they could have probably made it only way, but I, I don't like to make it tight for those guys when they come around there.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Andy. All right, this is on for public hearings. And will we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second and called the question. All's in favor. Post motion passes seven zero. Excuse me. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on? And it has reached. Want to call it Saint Francis, so. Anyone on the Zoom? Yeah. Thanks. Doesn't look like anybody's on the Zoom that. I mean, when do you think you wanted to come back for, for June or July? When's the June?
Well, the June deadline is Monday, so maybe the full eye meeting would be more realistic unless you feel like you're. I can try.
My recommendation would be if you don't have an update about Department of Transportation and, and then maybe some of that follow-up that would take place with the county. I, I, I would recommend probably July just because then it could be a more complete submission and then potentially you would be queued up for. Moving forward.
Okay, yeah. Oh, just on the DOT aspect, we do know, we do know we need a DOT permit. And we have the permit ready to go. We just. File at any minute now, but.
Okay, so that will be a condition that we can make that a condition of a state plan approval. However, we wouldn't be able to issue any permits or. Sign off on anything until we saw that approval from them. So we know there's a big, there's a large lead time in that. So I would just recommend and encourage you to begin that process.
Okay.
If it's gonna take more than this weekend, then. Then I, then I move, we adjourn the. Public hearing to July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Move to the second call to question. All's in favor. Opposed motion passes seven zero. Go around the board for comments. Start with some polls, Dan.
I really, I don't think I had too many comments. I just had here that you're, you're gonna need a highway work permit, which you just said. And. That obviously you're gonna have to keep that access clear to the building. But I'm sure you've talked to the fire department about that. Yeah, I didn't really have anything else.
Great. Thanks, Joel. Well, it seemed nothing at the start.
I have a question about the alternate helicopter setup. Is there anything that you're gonna do inside the parking garage to alert cars that a helicopter is coming in, much like you have for the ride coming up?
In the garage?
Yeah, because it's gonna land on the roof.
No, 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 in the.
Oh.
Back parking lot.
Question unrelated, for the lights. That are going to be replaced, but they're going to then be maintained by the hospital?
Yes.
That's it.
On the same point, the helipad, how long do you see you needing to use that temporary helipad?
I would say to be safe is probably at least thirty days. You know, give or take.
Okay, no other comment?
That's good. And I can use the Red October approach where they just. Hover and lower them down.
I could try.
Ben, I think.
My concern was brought up by Ken. With the. Traffic, when helicopters arriving to make sure that they stop. Now drivers will probably be distracted with the arrival of a helicopter. We really want to make sure that they pay attention to that they have to stop. I don't know if harm would be necessary or not. Like you said, works. I guess it does, right? There hasn't been any incidents, issues.
Okay.
It will note that I missed seeing it when I was heading up the hill there.
Well, it's awful. Normally it's off.
But it's off, then I.
Yeah.
If it was red, I might have caught it.
Yeah.
Right. Oh, anything else, Ben?
How was it?
All right, Peter. A question for Mr. Lern. That is, if, if there is a construction management plan. Hey, should there be a construction management plan? Should we or you? Have a copy?
Yes, we should. Absolutely.
And also, if the applicant could flesh out, you know. Just very little on the, on the plans that we receive that indicating. You know, signage or traffic flow or anything of that nature. Just flesh out that plan for us. We'd have a look.
Oh, for the remote helicopter site, you're saying?
Out for the site, but for the, for the entire. We don't, really don't have a sense of where the traffic is flowing. There's, there are no mixed signals. They're not indicated on the plan. If you could just. Indicate them on the plans, we'd have somebody doing what you're doing.
Yeah, we, we did show them on, on the striping mark, the pavement marking plan. At the circle, the upper circle, there's, so there's arrows. Showing on there.
I'll take another one.
I can. I guess she CT one of one is right. Yeah, if you see on the issue here, there's still four. Another. The temporary arrows.
Where it intersects with North Road, there's nothing material.
Just around the circle, right?
So normally we wouldn't put it on the lanes themselves, but just on the circle. And when we have signs. Which don't currently exist now, these. Those three signs, they're labeled number three. Those are one-way signs that we have. So could give the. Driver direction around the island. So. But if there's any others, we, you know. Would certainly add them. I know there was some comment about the no parking. And I think in looking at it again, we have a few of them. So on, on this plan, you'll see this new, this walkway here. We're gonna add these no parking signs here. Even though there's a fence there. We also want to put perhaps a few others here. They really shouldn't be parking on a, on a drive-through lane, but. I think it's prudent, you know, your engineer mentioned that it might be good to add some more of those. So. We're gonna, we'll add those other signs up there as well. So.
Thank you.
I think it would be helpful to, there's this distinction and it gets to the point of a construction management plan of, you know, what the signage will be like during a construction phase and what it would be like permanent. Once construction is complete. So. I think just as much detail for both elements would be helpful.
All right, finish, Peter. I guess my comment. You know, trees and wires don't mix well with helicopters. So are you trimming some trees back there as well?
Yeah.
Around the path there.
The helicopter folks asked if we could. I mean, they, they use it now, obviously. So the area that's just. To the north of the helicopter pad there.
It's got some tall trees.
There's a couple of trees that have grown in over time. And believe it or not, on the south side, it's not a lot. It's more, I think, trimming. That when they built this the first time, more trees have just come up again. So. The idea is to, you know, clear that out now while we're doing it.
I didn't happen to notice the battery clearing notes on the plan. Did anybody else see that?
I didn't see that either.
Okay, so.
As that was to start there. It's.
Starting day would be.
They wouldn't need clearing notes if you not have tat trees.
Okay.
Dead and dying. I kind of find it hard to believe that there's helicopters in use rather frequently.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's true too.
Unless the helicopter pads.
Your name's not Peter. All right.
I maybe take one next time. Sir, but I don't.
Okay. Thanks, Carol. And wires, right? You know, right now you have over some overhead wires. From, you know, near the helipad going toward the building and you have the, the warning ball.
Yeah.
Balls on there, but is that any plans to eliminate them?
Well, the, the overhead wires where the light poles are, those will. All be removed. So we'll have just the, the. Light fixture sticking up, no, no wires to each one. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Maybe somewhat existing things in, in other areas that are not affected by the lighting, I obviously would stay. But the ones of concern are actually right around the. The helipad. So be good to get those out.
Yeah, that's. That's what I was thinking. And the last thing was the, you mentioned the fence possibility. So what type of fence and how high were you thinking?
It was a forty-eight inch chain link fence, black vinyl. More of a deterrent to.
Okay, not slotted or anything, just.
No, I think we wanted.
All right, that's. Into my questions for today.
Move the planning board to for further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through eleven.
That's. Does that include our comments tonight? Okay. In that case. Move the second called question. All's in favor. Pose motion passes seven zero. All right. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. I can see the pavement's deteriorating.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Time for an upgrade. Eastdale Village. Long down, Jeff. Number twenty-two.
Hi, greetings, everybody. Jeff Kane, representing. MIT, MHTC Development LLC and Eastdale Village. Mr. Chairman, can I share my screen?
Go right ahead.
Let's test for off on the side.
Are you seeing the?
We're not seeing this.
No.
No.
Sorry.
Now we're starting to see something. There you go.
I present a view. Now we're out.
Okay, all right. Sorry. So yes, twenty-second amendment site plan and subdivision, really re-subdivision of lot, lot three E. It's been a little while since we've been here. We've had a lot of activity at the site and just to, you know, brief overview. Most of the freestanding residential units have, are, are built and occupied. The demand has remained strong. In the site and I think really throughout the, throughout the county. New businesses are continuing to open. We've got the four CEOs this week. Peg Groomer, Quest Labs, Hudson Valley Florist. And Lily and Marygold Home Design are all, all opening. They're scheduled to open this week. And we're seeing continued demand for new, for new. Commercial tenants on site as well. So things are, things are really working, working well. Out there. Really want to focus tonight on, on what we call the I block. The A block, that's, that's again, those are the four corners of, of forty-four and Eastdale Avenue. Rossi's is in the A block. The E block across the street, across Eastdale Avenue, there is partially occupied, partially under construction. The L block, that's the one that most recently we were, we were here for. Those eight buildings and that's where the, the. For the openings are happening this week. So that's partially built, partially, partially under construction. And now we're here for the, for the, for the I block. The last, last quadrant that are our main commercial corner there. This current application is really buildings I two through I five. Building I one, H J, they're still awaiting final tenantings. We don't have. A final designs for those, but really focused on, on the parking behind I two through, through I five. And as, as, I think as typical, we're really building the parking really only behind. This, this quadrant of this corner of buildings until we have better definition of our tenants and the rest of the building and be able to. To confirm what the, what the, what the parking demand. Will be coming out of those, out of those tenants. As part of this, we're converting some of the land bank parking that sits behind the, the HI and J block. And just to, you know, some brief history on that. In twenty twenty, as part of the board seeker review, back then you asked that we show you what. Converting that land bank parking to parking might look like. And we, we prepared a sketch and netted forty-six parking spaces back in there. Three years passed, we completed the design and we lost two parking spaces, but mostly because. We. Put. Two transformers in, and this kind of fat out on here and fat down here, put those, put those transformers in. To be able to really power the rest of the center. And. It didn't get exactly, they didn't fit exactly on the islands as we'd originally designed. So we had to make the islands fatter to fit the, to fit the transformers in. It didn't get exactly, they didn't fit exactly on the islands as we'd originally designed. So we had to make the islands fatter to fit the uh to fit the transformers in there. And and lost the parking spaces, you know, it's usually why transformers come last after we've after completed the design. Uh, the only ones you show on the site plans here, they're they're a final item. Uh, but these had to be advanced based on the kind of the nature of building. Out uh from the back towards towards forty four. So we lost two parking spaces, but not a uh not a not a big loss overall. Um, and then the the plan is to continue this lower section of land bank park and it'll continue to be land bank. Um, uh, and it'll remain green again until we we have better definition of the tenants and the and the remainder. Of the uh of the site. And that's how we've we've. We've shown it on our on our drawings before and plan to continue to show it is that. Uh, this is what it could look like, but this is really what what is being built is this section of parking. Uh, directly behind the proposed users. Uh, one of the, one of the impacts of that is, uh, we did lose, um. This was a one of the, one of our 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 open space areas. We lost three thousand four hundred and twenty eight square feet. Of our required uh open space, but. The project as a whole is still more than three hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Over what's required. So it didn't have an impact on uh what's been, what's been required, but it is a small loss of 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 open space. Uh, and here you can see the street view. This is the. The Eastdale Avenue view of these buildings. Again, we're intending to follow the. The 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 northeastern US village approach to the architecture. Um, uh, and I really have. Building I two. On the corner closest to to forty four, I three, and then these are really two buildings, I have four and five, but again, one of the architectural. Uh, features that we've done is is yes, it's a the roof line is designed as uh to look like a single building, but it really is uh meant to be. Uh, two separate users in there uh in that building. Um, and. The I two and I three leases, I will tell you, uh, I two. Uh, is live inspired, which is a um, uh, an art and fitness uh studio will be going in there with. Uh, commercial, I'm sorry, residential above. And uh, I three is a specialty food retail. Um, again, with uh with with commercial spaces above four and five. Not really announcing tenants at this point, but again, the same kind of thing, there'll be a retail uh commercial down below with with res give off. A part of this application is subdivision. Um, this is the current lot three E. And dividing out the uh the the two halves of uh of of. Uh, I two and I three in the blue, I four and five in the green. Um, the remainder is the new lot three E A. I fully expect three EA to be further subdivided in the future, but again, we're gonna. Figure out uh our our tenants needs and some of these will be actually owners' needs as we as we move forward. Um, lot three EA will be. Uh, one point nine four seven acres, um, buildings. Um, I one and H. Uh, building three EB, one point seven nine acres, three units, um, uh, of uh of of uh. Residential, three one bedroom units and twenty six hundred and sixty two square feet of commercial space. And then uh lot three EC with uh with I one and I two, three units, four bedrooms total. Uh, two thousand and ten square feet of of commercial. EV charging, uh, one of the, one of the charges and and uh. We're at the uh the the point and. Uh, EV charging's uh gone really through kind of fits and starts based on what's been available. Um, for for funding. I will tell you that. We constructed sixteen. Um, EV charge stations uh behind building B and spent about a quarter of a million dollars. Um, that's the, uh, and I will say that's that's the construction and equipment cost. I didn't include engineering, didn't include my time, whatever that's worth. Um, didn't include uh, uh, didn't include any uh any any finance cost, you know, this was paid paid out of cash. Um, about fourteen eighty five and ninety percent of that was uh rebated through the through state programs. Um, but the rest is just is just is just cash, uh, and that uh that gets you the stations up. Um, and then they have to operate and our goal is to. Not lose money in the operation, but it's uh in demand is, there's not a lot of demand for. Um, EV charging right now. Certainly grow, we certainly all have to prepare for it. Um, but uh, we, um, I'm not sure on a month and month basis that that we. Uh, break even because of not just electric charges, you know, those those you can charge for, but. But some of the other maintenance um and networking charges that you have to add to pay for it, having things operational. So just a a little bit of history on what we found out about the EV charging. Now the state has. This program was in twenty twenty one when when we began, um, uh, they haven't had a rebate program um. For the equipment here for multifamily dwellings since uh August of of twenty one, maybe maybe. Maybe October, um. So they have promised that by uh second quarter twenty twenty three, they're gonna have a new program. Haven't yet, but and we got a little another another month, but but the expectation is there will be more grants available and uh we we would intend to. Take advantage of it. In the meantime, our our intent is to plan, again, plan for the installation of. Uh, the EV chargers, put the conduit in the ground, figure out where we're gonna put it, make sure we have adequate capacity in the transformers to be able to. Um, install the the EV station. So what we have is. Uh, this existing transformer, again, on the fat island that we hear next to Parkside Drive. Um, it is a size to handle um, uh, some EV units. So we put our meter in panel next to the transformer and then run conduit to these eight stations. Really, each station has two arms, so sixteen ports. Uh, along uh along Parkside Drive at the at the back end of this, um. Uh, understanding the uh the town's um, uh, local law on this, uh, we are asking for. Um, a waiver from the installation of these stations until such time as we're able to actually get them in. Um, uh, but we are gonna put the infrastructure in place uh to be able to to exploit that. So yes, let the pull the wire and yes, have to. Uh, have to uh but the put the meter in the panel and but we'll have room on the transformer. And we will do that. We'll have, we'll have to dig things up to put the to put the wiring in, we'll be able to to move. Uh, fairly straightforward to uh to to make this happen. Um, right, and just as again, some of the history on this, um. I know the the board approved locations for us. And it was an interesting process in twenty twenty, just to twenty one, just to digress for a minute, but. Um, before you could get a grant, you had to have electrical permit. And uh, if we can electrical permit, you had to have. All of this changed in the middle of the process, we were able to get electrical permit and then uh then the the town changed the process, we had to have site plan approval for electrical permit. So we had the. So, so like in that process, um. The program ran out of money. So we got, we got, we got sixteen and and um, and we were able to get some infrastructure in for uh, not not to, not to blame the town, but it's just, you know, it's just. If everybody was learning through the process, but um, we did get infrastructure in for another uh, uh, ten stations and twenty charging ports. This is behind building eighteen. Near the mail building on the on the east side. So just so you know, we do have that infrastructure in place as well. And as money becomes available, we would hope to take advantage of the infrastructure that we have in here. And then the new infrastructure that we'd hope to put in behind the buildings up. Uh, HI J. Okay. Uh, but I. And and again, understanding what happens on the finance, then when we go to finance this, we ask the board if they if they can grant us a very specific waiver. Uh, on this, if you're so inclined, uh, from the requirement to install the stations now. Um, so we've let recognize that we have need to install the infrastructure. Um, and then the last piece of uh of our our application here is building P. Um, this is all the way on the uh, they really have the Poughkeepsie end of the Poughkeepsie corner of the site here. Building P really got, um, uh, it's it's a kind of its own little island there and um. Um, uh, kind of landlocked there, so we have uh. Uh, proceeded with construction, the foundation there and our have a building permit proceeded at our at our own risk. Um, and it's now before the 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 board, because we ended up with a. A slightly larger. Foundation than was on the uh was on the the prior plan. So this building uh sits, the foundation sits about seventeen feet from the property line. Notice this property line and skews away from the building, the building is is. Perpendicular to to forty four and this skews away from it. There is a mechanical room at the back corner here, of course, is at the closest point that which puts us about twelve point two feet away from the property line. This required setback, your minimum setback here is ten feet, so this does get close to that minimum. But I will tell you, it's again, the foundation is seventeen. When you get to the corner. Here, we're at twenty one feet away from the property line and this corner here, we're thirty two feet away from the property line, so it continues to move away. Uh, we've got the green and uh and deciduous trees planted in here. Um, we have a uh white vinyl fence that runs along the property line that ends. Uh, it ends pretty near the the back end of of P here. And one of the reasons we didn't extend this all the way to the property line is is a very. There's a very robust hedge that exists between us and the and the neighbors and uh. We thought it. We hope the hedge would look nicer, being able to see the hedge instead of the the vinyl fences area, but. We certainly will will do as the as the board directs in that in that area. I think that's uh, that's it.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Since you mentioned the hedge, is is that on your property or on New Year's property?
I I, you know, right, some of it, I believe hangs on to our property, um, but I but I I believe the the. Faces look like they're on the. I don't have a stake there, but when it looks like it.
Yeah, it is a fairly large hedge. It's fairly wide too, with that street though.
Right, it's a, yeah, it's it's that's.
That that guess ten, twelve feet high.
All of that, yeah.
All right. Uh, Eric, what's department's recognition?
Uh, this is. On for public hearing tonight's first time application. We do feel that uh the public hearing goes well. Uh, it's cementable to. A um. To a secret consistency determination. Um, and a condition approval both of the subdivision and of the site plan. It's as Jeff described, it's mostly breaking up building nine to five buildings. Um, there are some clarifications we requested for building P. Jeff covered some of that. I think he may wanna, he discussed would be earlier, some of the use of that building. Um, the or might wanna discuss that just to get its own clarification. Uh, right now, the program table shows commercial on the first floor. And no residential in the second, but Jeff explained earlier that the mixed use is a mixed retail, mixed commercial use. Uh, between the two floors. Uh, yet to be split up. And then it looks like you've already discussed the EV chargers, um, so that's pretty much it.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Um, Andy.
Yeah, we didn't have a lot of comments on this, um. You know, utility wise, we have a couple of comments on the grease traps, um, but my bigger question um is with respect to the land bank parking. Uh, Jeff, it as far as if you could show, just to clarify. What's gonna be grass and what's gonna be paved? Uh, right now.
Yeah, I I think this maybe this this one is the the where it's shaded will be grass.
It'll be grass.
Um. But really, everything below this line here is not gonna be built in this application. So nothing is we built here.
Okay. So my question is, um. You know, you have a, you have a boundary between pavement, brass. What is there gonna be curb there? Are you gonna let a sheet flow? What what? And how's that gonna work?
I I our our intent is to, um, I mean, again, this. This will be a construction zone. It won't really be grass. So this will, it'll be, you know, construction fenced off. If if so, play this out and so. Assuming this part gets built exactly like shown, which again, it's a safe approval, so yes, we could presumably build it and this and this building is grass. Um. We we would probably just leave a salt edge there and fence instead of instead of trying to curb it, um, but um.
Okay, so that's, so my concern is, you know, obviously erosion, you know, making sure that that's stable. Um, especially with the curbs, you could have channelized flow that could. You know, make it difficult to get that stabilized. Um, just wondering if 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 it makes, if you need to consider adding. Curbing or something like that to to collect it temporarily. I'm throwing that out there, I'm not sure. So, um, just something to think about, but but again, I don't think, I think we can resolve that as a condition if the board feels, you know, that that's. It's ready.
Okay, yeah, we hate to add curbing and rip it out, but that's I understand the issue and and uh. Maybe there's something we can do on the edge to prevent the better of erosion, maybe that might be the. Better answer. I think talking about it.
I guess unless the rest of the land bank gets, starts getting built with a different uh occasion, but right for right now, we need to make sure it's. Not everybody can say.
Jeff, are you showing twenty seven parking spaces now? Down from the, what was it, forty six? Or is my count off?
Well, um. In these two rows, forty four net instead of forty six. So you write this, this netted forty six. We're now netting this and that's forty four in these two, um, cause you. You lose some from the uh from the the non-land bank layout, but um, so there's there's some.
The transformers.
So yeah, some difference, right? And then the transformers lost this too, so.
But are the non-shaded ones being built now? So they're no longer land banked?
Right.
You said that the shaded area where your cursor is right now is what's remaining is land bank parking. So is the top part of that being built now?
Yes.
Okay, so there, how many parking spaces will remain land banked?
Um, well, I didn't count them.
Okay, I guess I think it's about twenty seven. That's what.
About half, about half of what's left.
Uh, fourteen thirteen, yes, twenty seven.
Okay. And we'll have to look and see if we have a, if any, any agreements need amending parking or otherwise. I don't think so, but we'll check.
Yeah, I don't believe there were any specific parking agreements there. It was just a land bank area. And in twenty twenty. Again, as part of that earlier review, the board wanted to see, well, what? What would it look like if you built that? It was just a, it was just a a non-built area, what would it look like? And uh, this is, that's that's how we. And it got to that uh, got to that 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 layout. So I don't believe there's a specific. Agreement related to. Parking numbers uh at land by parking.
Okay.
I think incorporated a note on the title sheet in lieu of a land by parking. Uh, agreement with the expectation that. That most of it would end up getting built out and be available to the applicant or the board to convert in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Oh, sorry, Carl, I just have one more thing. Um, as far as the the um electric vehicle charging stations for the um land bank parking area. Um. You mentioned the panel and a meter. Um, I just want to make sure, are you putting that in now? And if so, are you gonna use them? You'll use a mill bank enclosure?
Right, so not putting it in now, um, cause that's, but we've we've got room to, we've confirmed, we have room to put the, put that in. Okay, so so, yeah, now the um. But I tell you, we can order it now and might get it in eighteen months. No banks themselves are, and I'm 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 not kidding, they 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 they, so. It may not be no bank, but it'll, it it's something that'll, that I I understand is intended to hide the uh, to hide the. The 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 panel there and uh they they. It's just one of those things, this is crazy.
That's it, sorry.
Yeah, that's right. All right, um. This time I moved, it's playing word open the. Put the subdivision and site plan public here.
Second.
So the seconded calls question, I was in favor, my host. Motion passes seven zero. Anyone in the audience or online, can you unshare your screen, Jeff, for a minute? See if anybody's uh. For to comment on this application.
I I'd like to uh comment. And um, it 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 just has to do with the the great planning that Jeff is involved in with the EV stations. Um. I would hope that, you know, when he actually approaches. The completion or prior to the completion. That he looks into the surge protection aspect. And I hope that what he has. Or what they would offer him better than uh residential surge protections that. You know, come with our smart meters, that, you know, he 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 gets more than just a small MOV varistor. Uh, you know, to address any grid line surges. That occur. I mean, especially in light of uh. The Red Cross coming in and doing training for our. Fire Advisory Board on how do we locate? Those impacted by fire. So, um. You know, and and I would hope that uh. You know, and and I would hope that uh the equipment would come with uh proper insurance that makes them feel comfortable and makes the town. Feel comfortable, because a lot of these uh EV stations are kind of experimental and. You know, sometimes they do, the the vehicles do catch fire and. Um, you know, you can tell I'm not a fan, but um nonetheless, you know, if he's got. Good uh surge protection, that's better than a a smart meter. That, you know, that can handle the um, the kind of voltage that's gonna be required. I think that would be real smart to consider it before it's, it's actually finished off and completed, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we can get some high current too, I imagine with. The chargers and.
The equivalent is all you all listed, I'm not a surge. Protection. Um, uh, expert by any stretch of imagination, but I uh, I I assume. That you all has done the appropriate uh analysis of search protection necessary on this.
And I believe the cars have some of that built into them as well, but uh, as it fires up. They do have some fires with those and is concerned.
Yeah, I don't know how many of those are actually the batteries versus the charge stations, I don't know.
Alright. Um, anyone else, anyone else for comments? Seeing that, I will, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, it calls question, all is in favor. Post, motion passes seven zero. Score on board for comments, uh, start with Ben.
Sure, we must, must covered everything, very good.
Peter?
Uh, we have an applicant here who has. Basically done everything that he said he was gonna do. So if it, if I think if a waiver was required. You know, I would certainly support that, cause every, every confidence that he will follow up, you know, in a positive way. The other thing is, you know, we talk a lot about walkable communities, I just wanted to mention that. He's really, uh, he still has set the standard. I think for walkable, if you drive through there, the sidewalks are generally very, very busy. And I think you've set the standard and and a good example, you know, for. Walkable communities in the future and and the standards that they should.
Yeah, see people, people out and about, and the weather's nice, huh, a lot of people eating out on the sidewalk too with those tables.
Sure, um. When I initially saw this, I had some concerns um on both sides on uh. For building P and then, and then equitably on the other side. Where the Kelsey property is and then that um building that you relocated from the other side. Um, because I thought that it had to be a twenty-foot setback, but then. I, me and Carl talked and we realized it was actually ten, um, so. But after, after talking to both the Kelseys and um after looking at. Building P and talking with Carl and looking at some pictures of. The trees and the bushes and stuff like that that already exists, um, I was a little bit more comfortable with it, but I guess my. Comment's not a question, it's just, um. To, you know, just to, just to keep in contact with with the neighboring uh parties and just make sure that they're happy. And uh that they're screening, so. Oh, and I, what, one quick question, um, on the, on the Kelsey's side, um, there's a fence there. That's just for construction, right? That's just temporary.
There's still. Yes, um, uh, because I I believe in in conversation with the. The Kelseys, there was a discussion about did they want. Fence or landscaping, and then I believe they they opted for landscaping, uh, and and so, but, um. Uh, yes, there is still. That closest, but there's the house we relocated and there's the closest residential structure building.
Right, it's further back.
Twelve, and it's still under construction, so that's, that's why the fence is still uh, is still up there.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
What, it's just, I see that Jeff comes every time, what prepared? Comments? Joe?
I have no comments, I would agree that I don't have any problem with the waiver for the EV stations.
Okay.
Uh, no comment, I'm good.
Yeah, thanks, see. Yeah, I went out and looked at that myself, as I said. I mentioned it to uh Nicole, cause we're concerned about how close building P was there. And those, and that foliage is very, very thick there and uh. And high as well, so I don't think a fence, an additional fence length would make any difference there. Or for help, or it might even hinder the growth of that uh. The bushes there. I did have a question on. We covered the EV about the HVAC, where's, I mean, some, some of the dollars, you're starting to see some HVAC, but this. This new book building highs, it's a. It's a pitched roof, so is this ground units or is it hidden up on the pitch somehow?
Can I share my experience?
Sure. This may be more architectural, but. Just wanna make sure that stuff is, it's hidden as much as possible.
Um, that, that's so clear, this is the, this is the. Right, so here's the rear of um. Of I. Two and I three, but yes, the, we, we are accused of. The, I'm sorry, they they will be RTUs, not ground out, that they will be roofed out, that units.
Okay.
It's true, it's our intended to, to screen them, so. I expect back, uh, back with. Four, five as well, will screen.
Okay.
Again, they they will, they will, there will be some visibility, this isn't actually showing the US, it will be some visibility in the park. It's just, that's the, that's where you're gonna, you're gonna see them, but uh, here. Um, uh, trying to really kind of minimize those views. Uh, and and really make them so you can't see them from the forty-four quarter, but but they aren't. We aren't completely hidden from every, from every view, um, to be, uh, to be, to be.
Minimize the, being able to see those. Alright. I'm good then.
I move the planning board, find the Eastdale Village application for the second, set, nah. Twenty-second, and then it's site plan and subdivision for lot three E involved. Incremental changes the Eastdale Village project for negligible magnitude and scope. And that are non-significant and consistent with the previous secure findings adopted March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. And amended September seventeenth, twenty twenty, as modify the, by the proposed Eastdale Village application received April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to the second, call to question, all's in favor. Motion passes seven zero.
I move the planning board, find the proposed modifications to the area yard and bulk provisions of two ten dash twenty-seven are consistent with the goals and. Objectives of the town plan and chapter two ten pertaining to the intent and purposes of the M H H. District pursuant to two ten dash two seven one, two seven, I ten. And that the planning board grant conditional preliminary and final major subdivision approval for the final subdivision plat. Showing the re-subdivision of lot three E. As shown on file map number one, one, nine, four, seven, C, Eastdale Village, east, subject to the following. Response to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies, said responses to review by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included up, but not limited to the following items. Uh, in section E, which is one through eight.
See, we're doing this for. In subdivision. Yeah, I also wanted to add to. That's for subdivision, okay, we're good with that for now, but. Uh, moved in seconded, called question, all's favorite. Motion passes seven zero. For the, for the conditional, I'm gonna add, that we're gonna add the waiver for.
I move the planning board grant conditional amendment site plan approval for the Eastdale Village twenty-second amended site plan. Subject to the following, respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies and said responses to review by the planning department. As adequacy and completeness included up and not limited to the following, one through nine, waiver for the EV charging stations.
Move to the second, it's great, additional, call to question, all's in favor. Post. From passes. Seven to zero. For this one anyway.
It's turned to, I can do architecture review for this.
Yes, my second. Uh, for, for buildings, uh.
I two, I three.
Two and three.
I four, I five.
So, uh, again, these are the uh, the four, four buildings. Um, I two. Uh, and and again, the 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 rear of them, uh, so you can see the, the white is I two, the. Ten, three and four and five are in the, the blue. Um, as on the, uh, well, so every other building, we're using the hardy materials, so for the, for the siding and the panels, parts trim. Um, uh, we have some brick in there that you'll see, it's a thin brick, brick, brick veneer on one of the buildings. Uh, black asphalt roofs, uh, architectural roof shingles. Uh, vinyl windows, fiberglass door, um, those brackets that you'll see. Um, on the front, those are a Fipon polyurethane bracket material. Um, and then aluminum of of gutters and downspouts that, um, uh. Many colors are off the shelf, sometimes they have to actually paint them before they bring them on, and we end up with a delay and 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 gutters is. We've experienced recently on the building L one, uh, or L till two, um, anyway, so, um, our, uh. Proposal for the, the I two building, uh, all the siding and trim, uh, is in the party. Uh, Arctic white, again, which I, I think there's a number of buildings in this, uh, in this white, and it's, it's, uh, with the black windows. We think it's a, a very, a very attractive, uh, uh, program. Um, I three, we've introduced some brick in, as we have in a couple of other uh buildings, so we have the upper, upper story and the uh. Glengarry, uh, again, that's the thin brick, uh, uh, brick, brick veneer, um, kind of a. An orangeish, uh, red there, uh, the first floor, uh, the siding is the Monterey taupe. Um, and then the. Trim is all in the cobblestone. So again, this, and this combination of uh, of, of the. Tow, the Monterey taupe and the, and the cobblestone we've used on other, other buildings with, with great success. Um, and then the uh, are the I four, five buildings are. All in the evening blue, which again, we've used on the, on the number of the other buildings on the, on site there. Um, and the, the rear of the buildings follows the same, uh, uh, the same program, um, this way here, the side, that's the. That's the side, there'll be again, an alley between, uh, between building, uh. I two and building I one, which we have fronts on the, on on forty-four, so that'll, that white side. Uh, will be on the, at that alley. And the rear of that building again, white, and then I, uh. I three and the, uh, and the, and the Monterey taupe. Um, and building, um. I, this is really I five here, this is the, the corner of the, um, of Eastdale Avenue and the, and the apartment that access, where the windows will wrap around. Uh, that's all in the, in the evening blue, and then rear of the building, again, the same, uh, the same, um, party evening blue color.
Right. Any, yeah. Comments from board members on here?
I, again, I repeat, uh. The use of dormers, brackets, gables, the colors that you use reflect. Your architectural tradition of the Hudson Valley. And and it's really a model, again, for other developed centered and our community.
Yep, and it's a good one, you're using the long lasting material. Good thing for future maintenance. Any other comments? I will, we accept architecture as presented for buildings I, two, three, four and five.
Second.
Move to second, it called question, all's in favor.
I.
Post. Most fastest. Seven to zero. Is there any thing for building P here?
Oh, no. Uh, building P is, uh, yeah, that's why it's, we had to get the foundation then because of uh its location, but uh, it is not, uh. It is not, yeah, and we can really need design. But, um, but we'll get that. Alright, alright, thank you very much, I appreciate the, I appreciate feedback, appreciate the work.
I, I don't think so, right, there's, there's some, there's some adjournments and uh, and public. So I'll go too far. Yeah, we just have some, some business to adjourn, some. Projects, uh, eight Tucker Drive, I will be adjourned to public hearing to June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Moving second, it called question, all's in favor.
My, my.
Post, motion passes seven zero, Jeff, if you could unshare your screen. And seventy-six, uh, Ireland Drive extension, I moved the planning board adjourned to public hearing to June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Moves in second, it called the question, all's in favor.
I, post, motion passes seven zero.
All space self-storage facility expansion, I moved the planning board adjourned to public hearing to June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
So the second called question, all's in favor. Post, push passes seven zero. And for Stratford from Town Homes. I moved the planning board adjourned in the public hearing to June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved in second, called question, all's in favor.
I, post.
Motion passes seven zero. At this time, I move, we allow public comments and any other items on tonight's agenda, and please limit the comments to more than three minutes, and we will consider them during this portion of the meeting. Second.
Second.
It was a second, called question, all's in favor.
I, post.
Motion passes. Seven zero. Is there anyone wish to comment on remaining agenda items?
Yes, is it possible for me to comment on the, uh? The K L, the KM line? Right now?
It's one of the ones that we're gonna do an extension on, so, yeah.
It's a time extension, so it's on the agenda, yeah, sure.
Okay, great, I'll be brief, um, the first thing I wanna share, and the, the board may not be aware, but. There was a May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, so just in the year twenty twenty. In the Journal of Environmental Research, a new study called, and if anybody wants to chop this down. Residential proximity of power lines and risk of brain tumor. In the general population living near power lines, end quote. So I can repeat that again, um, it's called residential proximity. Um, um, and risk of brain tumor in the general population. Uh, living near. Power lines. And so, um. You know, for, for decades, scientists have actually linked magnetic field power line frequency. Uh, E L F, E M F, from power lines to, um. To, uh, the, the, um, risk of childhood leukemia. And, um, you know, children have a, a four point three times greater risk. Of developing this if their parents and they live less than fifty meters. From one of these things. I think that's a hundred and forty-six feet or something like that, so there are approximately, um. Fifty-nine parcels. That may be impacted due to proximal distance. Um, and, um. You know, property values, of course, are going to suffer, and we all know that, it's, it's in the literature, it's in the real estate. Uh, guides, and, um, these homeowners need to be aware of that. Um, you know, plus the risk of, um, their children developing, uh, childhood leukemia. So, um. Uh, you know, we, we need, you need to look at in the insurance. And I'm sure Central Hudson will have a pollution exclusion, chapter thirty-two. If they even have any insurance about this. And Central Hudson will absolutely transfer liability or any liability to the town. And, um, I will say that any mutual indemnif- in indemnification clauses that. The town works out with Central Hudson is rather, uh, unethical. Because of the, uh, the risk here, so. You know, other countries have done their best, uh, or better than America to. Make sure that these major transmission lines are not in proximity. And they have, you know, brought in independent building biologists, which we have not done. To actually test what is actually coming out of these things, and and that's really what I would, um. To actually test what is actually coming out of these things. And and that's really what I would um. Suggest if one wants to be ethical while uh the town permits. These K M lines to uh come into um, you know, our living spaces. So that was all.
All right. Thanks. Thanks again, Michelle.
Mm hmm. You're welcome. Bye.
Right, anyone else? Push the comment. Seeing none, I will we resume the meeting.
Second.
Move the second called questionals in favor.
Uh.
Pose motion passes seven to zero. And stuff is the still village ambulatory center. On back. So you wanna share your screen again there?
Yes, thank you.
So um. Thank you. Um. The inventory surgery center um off of uh Founder's Way, Twin Founders Way and and Route forty four. Uh has been developed. Um and under construction and. In the. As we're nearing the end of this construction pri- process, they hoped open in uh in August. Um the doctors uh become concerned. And the top here is the existing approved uh approved elevation. Um that. The main entrance, which is here at uh, I can't see my uh my pointer um. The at the this end of the uh at this end of the building. Isn't prominent enough. And uh what uh what would happen is everybody's in a drive to uh to this door, try to come into the end to the building. So. One of the one of the 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 things that they have uh to the trust at issue is to. Add a canopy at the at this entrance to the building. Um so it's much smaller canopy um and designed to kind of match the uh match the the existing architecture. Um and to provide some coverage for people uh getting out of their cars, enter the building. And I just want to just. Show you the uh real quickly, kind of the indoor. Layout of the building, which informs what's uh what's going on and why this such an important feature. Um. This is where the canopy is. Um and this is where the entry is. So the canopy. Is at the uh at the exit point. These are the thirteen. Pre and then post stop beds. After you do your your surgery, you recover in here and then you're allowed to leave uh leave the building. And if you've ever had same day surgery on. I believe every occasion you can't drive yourself home because you've been that exercise. So somebody's picking you up here. So you are picked up here, and that's where that's why this this had to have a canopy and. Little longer to stay. Somebody pulls in here, they pull up, um you're waiting out uh in in the foyer or outside here and get uh in a wheelchair and then get put in your car and 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 drive away. So this is a. Kind of a necessary thing, um but you can't get in the doors here. Cause you can't walk from the outside into the pre or post stop area, right? You can't come in here. The only way you get in is through the doors at the at the corner here. This is where the waiting room is. This is where the receptionist is. Um so they take you from here. Uh process you and then and then put you into the uh into the the pre op rooms, move into the O Rs and then come back into the end of the end of the post op. Rooms. These rooms kind of share use based on uh what the demand is at the particular point in time. So you have to come in this door and again, staff will use the door down the down the side here. This is where. Patients uh patients have to commence. They really wanted to direct people to that door. Um and that's that really kind of became the need for um uh. One of the functions of this canopy is to get people over there. There will also be some some signage you can talk about a little later. But that's the uh that that's what uh what what really drove this. So we developed these uh these 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 plans um and um. Which is great. You submit those, but the the plan's only only till half the story because we needed to do something out front as well to. To help better uh better define uh the uh where where cars are going. Uh on the on the left here is kind of the approved. Um plan that shows the canopy shows the striping. Uh didn't or didn't call out specific area here for uh for drop off at the uh at the entrance. So we, you know, undertook a uh some. Number of studies um and and came out with uh with a with a plan uh here to. Uh to to improve the striping. And uh I see Mark Rogers on the uh on the line here. We think he did a better job here than we did. Um and we'll see that, you know, we. We struggled with this and and I and I really like what uh what 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 uh particularly this extension of this line across the frontage here. I think really helped to uh to 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 define um uh the area here where well, somebody can can do it and do a drop off. Um one of the things about this uh canopy is that um. Uh of course, attached to the building. Uh there are two columns here in the sidewalk, and then it's cantilevered out beyond there. So we don't have. Uh we don't have support. Support structure in the pavement like we do on this canopy here, right? So this is just this this last piece of it is is cantilevered over. So that leaves this area uh open. Uh really, it's just it's just paint guiding people. Uh but paint does a lot of things versus you're driving down the highway at sixty miles an hour. It's just, you know, two four inch strips of. Paint to keep you in the right lane. So we think paint does a does a really good job here. We think this is a uh. An arrangement that work. I I you know, Mark will I'm sorry, give us his opinion on this as a as well, but we think this is uh this is an arrangement that addresses. Um uh a lot of the a lot of the a lot of the concern here. Um so that's the uh that's the 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 history of the striping. I I will talk about. E V charging here for a second. Um. Wasn't planning on talking about E V charging at this site. We had uh we had talked and we were starting to come up with a plan and. I had uh I I had shown um your staff a a plan and it said uh. E V striking plan, restail bill of striking plan. And so Eric said, oh, E V, what are you doing about your E V chargers? I thought, well, I. I wasn't gonna say no, but we had planned to do them, but I wasn't really ready to talk about it, but the but the we talked and that will maybe, you know. Rather than come back, you know, next month and talk about them, we can talk about them tonight. So I my apologies that the. The applications in in pen and ink here, but um I really is um uh. What we were planning to do and thought it might be appropriate to at least talk this through. Um but we had um uh planned to put in uh three stations, six heads. Uh along the uh along the Founder's Way side of the property. There's an existing transformer here at Elizabeth Lane and uh Founder's Way. Uh we uh hide the uh Millbank or Equal um partially behind the uh behind the uh existing. Uh refuse area. Uh and then that we have conduit going to these three, which we intend to install. Um another uh put some conduit um underneath the uh access to the the parking lot here. So we have the potential to put. Two more uh in this area, uh should the the again, the the programs with the state workout and then um. Uh we also run in conduit underneath Elizabeth Lane over to the next lot. Uh to the uh to the north here, the building G, the daycare lot, however you want to refer to that, but that's uh so we can feed. Another six stations off of the same. Uh meter in panel here rather than to have another meter in panel of a transform where we can use. This infrastructure to be able to get across the road and feed further uh further into the uh into the site over there. So those are the those are kind of some of the the the. Combinations that we were proposing for for not only. Um uh now, but for per future. So again, I we. We don't intend to install these stations uh uh until there's a um the program from the state. This is is, you know. Better defined. It makes it that make sense. Um but we're certainly doing the uh doing the. Uh the infrastructure uh installation now. Uh to uh to make that uh make that make that possible.
Right. Glad you're planning ahead.
Thank you. And I and again, just to. Remind the word, these are the sixteen stations that uh that we put in behind building B and behind the uh the the A block, so. I have those. Um there are other locations that we are no longer going to propose to put uh to put them in. Uh because. It's really kind of built out now. It's 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 not feasible and we had. You know, twenty stations uh behind buildings two and three. So we propose into no longer gonna propose to put those down. We had some down by the community center as well, which we would now take off the uh. Uh take off the map and no longer post of the ones that we have in the new ones proposed wouldn't really replace those in terms of uh. That's it. All right.
I believe they're, yeah, they're the new town code requires a certain number, right? It does. It's so. So we're keeping that in mind as well.
All right. And again, we just because of timing, we would ask you again, should the board agree to to. Address these in terms of uh a waiver if uh if that's acceptable for the boards.
Okay. Um Eric.
Sure. Um since this is a uh relatively minor amendment to the previously approved site plan and architecture, uh we're recommending that the board. Have that in your wave of public hearing for this. There's a resolution for that purpose. Um during review, there were some the 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 architecture seemed fine. That's for the board's review. Um the. Staff and consultant had some concern about the um. Uh the the effects on the parking layout drop off for this very limited. Area. Um and we thought the board should discuss that. And perhaps come up with a preferred direction for it. We thought that that was likely to occur during meeting, and so we've provided conditions uh to proceed with the amended site plan. Uh consistency finding and approval, assuming you come up with a a design direction. Um that can be handled, you provide guidance for staff uh for conditions of approval. Uh alternatively, you could have the applicant come back with the revised design, but we're hopeful that that won't be necessary.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Um Andy, I'm sure you have a.
In a couple of comments. Um yeah, my my biggest concern was the turning movement um onto Elizabeth Lane. Um. Based on some some. Turning movements that that uh Jeff was able to provide. It it did look like the even a passenger car was gonna cross the center lane. Um. It's not ideal. I don't know that much we can do about it or how much traffic goes this lane will actually experience. Um my other comment, and I think this was prior to kind of reference to the board. Um I was wondering about how the building would be protected um. At the canopy. Um and then I guess it also occurs to me, Jeff, is there any? Changes to grading that are are necessary as a result of this new canopy?
Do you want to review the grading plan now?
Sure.
Right, so. The uh there's some very minor changes in the grade. I was just just the highlights that that uh there's. Right now, there's right full curb across the front and we're supposed to transition down. Flush curb where the yeah, where the canopy is and then it transitions back up the full curve across front. So it's it's very minimal. It's still this is an existing cash base and still gets the water to the cash basin. Uh so we uh we're we we think. Uh actually, some of the water flows this way, but but it does it still get into the uh into the space and say uh as we've. It works really. Um we also again recognizing that. Yes, these columns with with the with the flush curb here, these columns become a risk, so. Um we're actually going to. Uh have concrete of thirty inches and then wrap that a more all party like uh uh around the ground those but care treatment. Um so they're protected, but not not exposed concrete and the other front. So there was a um yes, protecting. Uh protecting those columns was important and um uh really it's needs to we kind of these two columns for the little overhang and the uh and the two columns for the new canopy of the ones that uh. Um that get protected there.
Okay, so. Yeah, that's setback from the building as it is.
Mm hmm.
There. Sorry, this is this is how I'll prepare. This is from yesterday, so I'm listening. Um okay, and Mark is on as well as. Said that maybe you can find the diagram we had there already. Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, so I did take a, you know. Review of this. I didn't. I just looked at a purely layout perspective. Um you know, ideally, the door location doesn't. Uh. Offer much immovability room for someone coming out of that drop off area to then proceed on to Elizabeth Lane. Um but you know, looking at the circumstances, I tried to look at, you know, the best that we can try to do. To further define that. Uh and that's what the sketch that you're seeing there. Um. You know, just uh trying to let at least provide some kind of delineation of that a little bit better. Um you know, ideally, it'd probably be best if they were both using. Operationally, the one that's approved, but you know, looking at what we have in front of us, that's, you know, what I came up with as a suggestion. Um but it does create a a conflict when the backup area for those ninety degree parking spaces that are adjacent to that. Um you don't have sufficient width in the aisle for ninety degree parking. And potential solution might be angled parking, but you likely to be losing some parking spaces with that. Um so that's just, I guess, something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, they're the, you know, near the main entrance, you have. No parking space for backing up into it because you have the snow storage area there. So what?
Right, so. This is no storage area because it's not. It's not useful. You can't you can't park here because these. Are hard posts in the ground. You can't you can't back up here, right? There's there's simply there's simply no rail. Um. This is a little different because uh you're right, if somebody's parked here, uh you're pinched, but um. Kind of the circumstances are that. First off, somebody's parked here. Um second is is that they they pull down, maybe they came in early and pull all the way through with their face out. That that's no problem. A third is that they 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 want to leave when somebody is here for the ninety seconds or whatever it takes to get somebody out of the car. Uh and they can't wait. And then so, yes, it could be a conflict, but it's. It's gonna be less of a conflict than somebody sitting at the stop bar here. I am sorry, you've already, I mean, it's an aisle, so there are sometimes there are people waiting at the aisle to get out. Um I it's uh I we don't think it presents a. A significant enough difference uh to really want to re stripe this area here, which again, doesn't address. The fact that you might have stacking for a minute or two at the uh at the stopper. That's that's that was our.
Jeff, if I may. Solid white line.
This one or this one?
That. Or it says white solid line.
Oh, this one. Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. People. I think psychologically, taking safe driver courses. Even though you're not supposed to, white lines, they cross over. If that was yellow. Be more obvious. And they tend to stay away from yellow lines, like double yellow lines, for example. Just a thought, maybe make it yellow instead of white.
I guess I can respond to that since it's my markup.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um so generally, uh white. Pavement markings are meant to delineate uh directions of travel in the same direction. Um when you're using yellow, they usually delineate opposing traffic directions. So that's why you have them on on the center of a two two way roadway. Um so that's the typical, you know, standard in the M U T C D. Um it would probably be advised against using yellow over in this area.
Okay. Okay, that's good thought. All right, um. Let's uh continue going around for for cut board for comments. Do you have anything else?
No.
Peter.
Uh with regard to what uh Ben just had to say, just because it isn't commonly used, doesn't mean it doesn't make good sense. Um you know, I think the yellow stripe stands out. And I think it would be be more remarkable than the white striking.
You you could adjust also the thickness of the line. It doesn't necessarily need to be. Four inches. It could be a thicker white line, you know, stop bar might be about, you know, eighteen inches wide. You can do a six inch white line or a little bit, you know, thicker if you want. Um but I'll leave that to the board. Just a question.
Hmm, that might be way up. I'm not. I'm not sure if white shows up better visually than.
And I don't see why we couldn't use. Yellow set white just because yellow was a common use. I think right Ben is right. You it's gonna stand out. Significantly with that. Extreme. If there was no walk, then right, and it makes sense. Why not do it? Tend to stay away from the yellow and the white, I I think. Yeah. And the other thing is. Uh I think your idea of the canopy, second entrance. Makes a lot of sense when you just. These people are sure have done this before. They have some understanding of where these buildings function. Otherwise, they wouldn't have asked you to do it. So I think it makes good sense.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Peter. Up Steve.
Uh yeah, my only comment is I like the the wider white.
But the wider, yeah.
Um I guess I don't really have any comment. I mean, so. I guess this is the best you can do with a rough setup there, so. All I have to say.
I just hear a tie commercial. Did you say wider weight or?
Did you say wider weight or wider weight?
What?
Why?
I have no comments.
Nicole.
Um, so are you adding any lighting to either entrance or exit?
Um.
So what are the, what are the operation hours? Is it, is it going to be closing time by like five o'clock or?
Yeah, they don't, they don't, they don't typically work late and and uh, um, so there is under canopy lighting here. I don't believe there's under canopy lighting uh uh, proposed on under this at all, but there, but but there is, but there is under canopy lighting under the under what was approved as the original, like six foot overhang, so there is, there is lighting in this area, nothing in particular. Um, and let's go to the elevation, so this, this sits over top of this lower uh, 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 overhang that's against the building, so so this overhang will provide lighting, downlighting into the uh, onto the sidewalk here, I don't believe it's running specifically up and uh, up in here.
Okay, uh, another question for you, um, are you putting any type of ramping in?
Well, that's, and that's um, um part of the grading plan here is that, is that instead of a full curb across your step up, we're gonna uh, uh, depress the curb here, so we, it'll be flushed with the pavement uh, in this area here, so yes, there will be um, but won't be a ramp, you'll just be at grade, you know, getting out of your vehicle and going to get up door.
Okay. All right.
Uh, and and which is, which is how this is constructed, by the way, this is flush as well. Um, so in this area.
Okay, uh, another question for you, sorry, but it'll be my last, I promise, um. Uh, do you need to put any more handicap spots in?
So uh, was interesting, um, uh, comment from the building department and and um uh, the specific reference to the code and and uh, is one thing that I, and I looked through the rest of the code to make sure my memory was right. But uh, uh, it was called out for hospital outpatient facilities, which this is not, we're we're simply not a, not a, not a hospital outpatient, this is um, it's an ambulatory surgery center, it's entirely different use, uh, defined and entirely different uses used. Um, um, obviously, don't need handicap spaces here, but again, the the people have someone take them here, not that they don't need handicap, but it's, but but uh, handicap access, but people have someone take them here and pick them up, but it's not as if um, a uh, a a mobility impaired population is the primary driver into the side of the sites, there isn't the same demand for um, uh, for handicap spaces uh, on this, so we have uh, the the six I believe proposed, and you think is adequate for the uh, so.
Okay. I just did have one follow-up question, Jeff, what's signage going to be out here, like, like, trying to delineate drop off?
Yeah, so I I I was at a meeting this afternoon about that, so I can, I can give a little, a little update, but related to the architecture, but I can talk about it some now, um. The only thing I wanted to say, though, about the handicap parking is um, the code referenced also talks about ten percent of the parking spaces for hospital outpatient facility for spaces for patients and visitors. Um, so again, remembering that you've only got, if you had every bed full and every OR full at the same time, it's nineteen, which will never happen, so so twenty spaces, ten percent will be two, we're well above 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 that number, so we would even if that were the even if that were the population, we've again, think we have plenty of handicap parking, so sorry, so I just, but yeah, on the on the on the signage. Um, we talk about signage a little bit, um. Here's the 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 plan, um. So this is the east elevation, so this is the gable that you see, and I I recognize that we'll likely have to come back and 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 show you this and uh, is once it's, once it's done, um, but uh, but the the and some of the decisions made made today are really driving now the design. Um, this is going to be the kind of the branding gable, it's going to say Duchess Ambulatory Surgical Center right here. Uh, and that's going to be the name on the building, it's going to be really visible on that uh, on that uh, on that corner of the building. Um, it's a lot of words, right, so it's uh, that was a nice space that was that was kind of big enough to be able to do that prominent enough, um, we didn't really think it. Um, we didn't like it on the uh, on the on the Route forty-four side, didn't think it it worked well with the building on the forty-four side, um. Um, didn't think the town would like it on the forty-four side, so so this is the, we think the appropriate corner for that that type of signage. So Duchess Ambulatory Surgical Center Desk, D A S C, then becomes part of their, uh, part of their branding. Uh, but against a lot of letters, so um, there the proposal is to have a a a desk sign on on one of these cables, probably over this gable, again, to give that some definition with signage. And then um, uh, and then a a a smaller sign um, um, again, probably on the on the uh, on this, on the station board, which will say um, patient drop off. Patient um, uh, patient discharge, however the language is, patient that patient pick up. Um, uh, so again, to to provide some signage for for definition on the building. Um, in combination with the building signage, um got a good overview here and um. I don't really have a good overview, um. I'm doing a different drawing, but but uh, at the 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 way into the parking lot is just uh, is just here on the on the Founder's Way, and so a small monument sign would go there, which would, which would again, define desk uh, and point you in the right direction. Uh, a small uh, a small wayfinding sign, it was the plane to tell you to come in this way. Uh, and then a couple of wayfinding signs in the in the middle here to to take you kind of around the um um around the site. Uh, so you can get to the end of the door, so just to make sure that there's a couple of those wayfinding signs are not, they're not lit. They're just uh, some signs with an arrow to point you to the right direction for pickup and discharge, so some combination of some ground mounted um, a monument sign, and then uh, some uh, some signage on the building to uh, to to better climb, so. And again, if if we should come back and and show you those, or if if we can work that out with staff, just let me know, and we'll we'll certainly do whatever uh, the board would.
Yeah, the monument sign is the only thing that typically would require be part of site plan, if you, so if it could get incorporated into something what, you know, this or some future.
And uh, yeah, and we can, we can certainly do it as as part of the uh, the plan that would come back for signature, and again, unless the board wants to see it, I I, it's uh, right, um.
Do you know where it's going to go now?
Uh, yes, I just don't have, for whatever reason, don't have.
Approximately by that entrance, though, on Founder's Way.
Yeah, it's uh.
On Elizabeth Lane, but the other.
The screen was right here.
Yeah.
You had, do you have a section of the twenties of the of your site plan, because I think that chose it. Oh.
It's all on the other side of the street.
Yeah, I I um, I I probably have it, um, I think, I think it's all.
Yeah, or it's, it's not, I haven't. I think that's something you can work out with staff. Um. Talking of small on the side, right, something that's very, yeah. The uh and as far as the handicap parking, I think, you know, for this building, you know, what old patients are getting dropped off to picked up, so.
Springy.
I guess so, you know, other than some people visiting, I guess, so.
Sound of everything was sufficient, yeah. If you can see this uh, up here. Is it showing? Nope, no.
When you're, maybe you want to unshare your screen and then share again?
Is that uh?
That's the uh, yeah, because you've got to get the other view. It's time.
There you coming up, all right, yeah, okay. So this is the, right, so um, my cursor showing now, right, yeah, so that's the, that's the entrance, and so we have a monument sign uh, in this uh, on the sideline here.
And again, by monument sign, you're thinking something relatively small, it just.
Yes, yeah, yes, yes, um, yeah, um.
Yeah, we can, we can work with. Yeah, I can do it. Not a Las Vegas sign, but.
Jeffrey, do not enter signs, um, at the um exit button, if you have any.
I'm I'm sorry.
Other do not enter signs posted um, at the exit uh, where the new uh, canopy is going. Yes, there are uh, there are do not enter and stop signs on uh, uh, close on both sides of the.
Okay. Okay. All right, a couple last things, and I mean, you know, I think everybody was okay with not angling the parking, is that correct? It keeps the way it is, because then, but putting that, I think if people were in favor of having the line of using Mark's uh, markings for that, and making the the white line wider, the question was color, whether it's yellow or or white, um.
I'm okay with the wider white.
Wider white.
I know. Yeah, I'm trying to see.
wider.
Um.
I guess, I guess I thought the white paint might, white paint may stand out better than yellow, but.
Man, I'm I'm okay with either yellow or wider white.
Why the white to go with the code?
Yeah, I was white.
All right, it seems like the consensus is the is the white line, but make it wider, six inch, as Mark suggests. All right, I think that covers it then. And that they, he could do the freestanding monument sign uh, per se, as I guess.
Can, that he can work out the monument sign uh, design and detail of the location, that the Founder's Way location with signature review.
Right, yes, yes. And that, that was correct.
That's often someone question. It, this is strictly an ambulatory. It's not emergency, like somebody at Rossi's sliced their hand, could they run over there?
I uh, they schedule these surgeries, I don't know that they're not going to take them, but it's not.
It's not meant for that.
It's not meant for that.
It's not urgent care.
All right, all right, and the guys at Rossi's, the guys at Rossi's wouldn't go there anyway, but it's. But the uh, no, it's really, it's really not, it's still what it's meant for, no, but it's a uh, they really do schedule them and uh um, and they really want you there on time, so that's the signage was important.
All right.
I moved the planning board.
Sorry, and and did I just interrupt, and and did you add waiver on the
Yes.
EV charges on their record.
For for that particular.
Yeah, I moved the planning board, we've the public hearing in accordance with two ten dash one five one B.
Second.
Moved consecutive for with public hearing, called question, most in favor.
I.
Post, motion passes seven zero.
Move the planning board, find the amendments of the Ambulatory Surgery Center Building F Architecture and Drive Isle for the twentieth amended site plan involve incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of eligible magnitude and scope that are not significant and consistent with the previous seeker findings adopted March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and amended September seventeen, twenty twenty, as modified by the proposed amended materials received May fifth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Moved the second, it called the question, all those in favor.
I.
Proposed, motion passes seven zero.
I move the planning board, great conditional site plan approval for the proposed Ambulatory Surgical Center Building F amendments to relevant portions of the twentieth amended site plan that was conditionally approved on seven twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and conditional architectural review approval for amendment amendments to the Ambulatory Surgical Center Building F Architectural Approved for twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies, sub responses to review by the planning department has seen, this included up on the limited to the following. One through seven waiver EV charging stations and eight workout monument sign with signature view.
Second.
Moved in second, it called question, all's in favor.
I.
Post, motion passes seven zero. Did you grant our control review, I didn't get.
And my, I have a.
I know, then, yes, it was, it was included in the site.
Yeah, the minor.
I have, I have a bigger sample than normal, and I uh. Well, at least shows. The change was from uh, iron gray to what's called black water. So it's just a slightly darker version, but uh, this is the custom color, which is why they don't have to chip for it. Luckily, a piece of painted, uh, painted hard, so, uh, but that's the, that's, it's a very, very minor change to that of the canopy, or the changes on it, but uh. And so with the, with the building signage, do we need to come back and make a presentation, uh?
No, we're, we're, we're.
We're gonna have that with staff review.
Okay, well, and then if they're, you know, zoning, right, you know.
As long as we're, as long as they conform to the zoning, otherwise, you might even put the ZBA, but that's another.
Yeah, you know, okay, to be, okay, great, thank you, we got. All right. Take care, yeah, Mark, we'll see you next month.
Bye, see ya.
And next up is farmhouse properties LLC contour permit. Introduce yourself and uh ready to say what you want to do.
I'm a sober engineering.
Yep.
And this is a simple fill permit with the wire bring in. Yeah, applicant just wants to bring in dirt. Um, feel like that, fill in the existing land to just hopefully in the future, it'll be more marketable than it was now, there's no plans right now for what it would be for. It's just, this is just a basic fill application.
What is, is owned, are are two acre? So it's residential zoning, correct?
Yes.
All right, um. We can uh, go to Kristen and for.
Okay, sure. Um, so this application is on for a major land land contour permit, um, for secret purposes, it's an unlisted action, subject to a coordinated review. Uh, staff is recommending that the board uh, declare their intent to be lead agency this evening. Uh, there is a resolution for that, um, it's also subject to a waterfront consistency review, so um, I just updated the recommendation memo to include reference to coastal consistency form to be submitted the next submission um, for staff to take a look at, um. And uh, of course, the permit review itself, so uh, we're looking to just uh, have the the plans that be cleaned up, we're looking for additional information, I don't want to you know, completely belabor the point, but obviously, given the number of comments, um, there are some substantive ones, um, looking for drainage analysis. Again, not going to steal Andy's thunder, but um, you know, just looking to clean up the plans, um, and get a little bit more detail on the application, I know the board had questions about the future use of the uh, property, um, that said, uh, so does staff, um, not just en- engineering and planning, but also the building department, um. How that uh, property will be filled, and I I'm not a structural expert, but the building department will be reviewing for that, so um, we'll be looking again for more information um, there. Uh, given that this is uh, in proximity to uh North Road, we would also note that you will have to consult with uh, Department of Transportation, this current application was circulated to the DOT. Um, today, we hadn't received any comments, um, but I do encourage you as the applicant to actually consult with them and make that, um, and it initiate that consultation, um, on behalf of your client. Um, and again, as you might have heard earlier, uh, that that process can um, entail, and I'm sure you're aware, uh, along lead time, so um, we we want to make sure that we're involving them sooner than later. Um, also, just want to uh, note, um, that we had, uh, Carol Knapp, our environmental consultant, take a look at this, um, from Aspen Environmental, so there is a memo uh, in your packet, um for the board's review, but also for you, um, I almost would recommend, uh, perhaps before the next submission, perhaps meeting with a few of staff a few of the staff members, uh, maybe just to head off a little bit, um of back and forth, uh, you know, just typically, we would, we would host a pre-application meeting, we probably would have been able to um, head off a bunch of this, but um that said, uh, you know, you have the comments, um, we expect that applicant will work through them, um, a number of my comments are directly out of the code. Uh, so we're just looking again for more detail, um, and with that, I would just again, reference the resolutions that were prepared are regarding a secret lead agency intent and deferring action at this time pending establishment of lead agency. Um, taking note of the comments that were provided to you uh, by staff, and again, Andy and Carol both reviewed the application, so I defer to them for their respective reviews.
All right. Thanks, Kristen. Uh, yeah, that is, when I was out there, that is quite a steep, steep drop off from where the house parking is. When I was out there, that is quite a steep, steep drop off from where the house parking is currently. So it's, it's concerning. Well, and.
Take. Yeah, so, um, you know, this, they are proposing project does propose, propose to disturb over an acre. Uh, so that would trigger, uh, the need for a swift, uh, and covered under the speedy, uh, state speeds permit, um. And the, as far as you can tell, they're not proposing any previous surfaces, so it would just be for erosion side control. Um, but we are asking that, that a hydraulic analysis to provide, just to make sure that there's no, um, changes in hydrology that could cause problems. Uh. One of the things, well, before I do that, uh, one of the things that Kristen mentioned that, that I. That the building was starting commented on is if, is if there is a building that will be proposed on this pad, I, I completely agree that. Um, the way that the material is placed and the type of materials placed, uh, is gonna be important to make sure that that's, um.
Compact.
Compact that, the bad, compacted, yeah. Um, and then finally, you know, as far as, since there isn't a plan. For our knowledge of what this is gonna look like, um, then I could sit here for a while. Um, I think the board may wanna consider what the, the, the level surface, um, is covered with. Um, so I don't think the board is gonna wanna look at, uh, gravel surface for any period of time. Um, so you may wanna think about what that's gonna look like and what you'll recommend.
Yeah, we've had some other cases in the town where somebody moved forward with something. Clear, clear cut everything and just left it. And that causes trouble. So we wanna make sure we avoid that, um, all right, I'm gonna go to, uh, Carol next to. Have her explain her. The concerns.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's. Understood this is just for a land contour permit, but there's a lot of issues. Um, because of the location, this parcel. Uh, it's acknowledged that it's within the coastal zone, so the local waterfront revitalization program has to be considered, the policies of that. Um, you know, we're talking about clear cutting and filling of two acres that's five hundred foot from the river. Um, and has a view from the river even. Last week, I'm partial green out. Uh, there's also the, uh. The LWRP also requires consideration of potential impacts. To the Lloyd Soho scenic area of statewide significance that is immediately on the other side of the river, which will be in view of anything that's, you know, the two acres are cleared. Uh, parcel, it's also lies immediately adjacent. To Quiet Cove, uh, the county's riverfront park. Uh, that's situated, you know, immediately north of that. Um, and immediately south is, uh, a historic site, the, uh, Maris Newbold Carriage House. Um, and the Fern Tour, and the Fern Tour is the ecological preserve in the most northern parcel of Maris. Campus, um. And it is identified in several documents, including the town's recent open space as a local, as a, a future connector trail. Um. So that has all got to be considered now, also, uh, the parcels in the W one waterfront overlay district. Uh, and that requires additional deliberation. Um, so all of these things are. Um, it, yes, it's going to be filled, but since this would be the time to review it. In consistency with all those items as opposed to waiting till it's a cleared site. And then reviewing, cause once the bulldozers are there, the damage is done. Um. Additionally, there is a wetland immediately, I, I'm not sure if it's actually on the site, extends on the site, or it's downgrading of the site. There's drainage that runs through this site. And into the wetland, which is certainly on the Maris parcel, but it may extend into this site. So, uh, it may, the filling may have, um. Effect on these out aquatic resources, the EF said that the proposed, proposed actual have no effect on any aquatic resources, but we don't know that to be true. Um, filling of this, especially moving the drainage, um, may alter that significantly, there, so there may be town or, uh, army corps permits required. And again, because the erosion sediment control or the downgrading well and the erosion sediment control measures that were posed may not be quite. Protective. Um, and then there's just the comments about the, the plans that were inconsistent and. Recommendation to review them for clarity and accuracy and consistency. So at this time, I think, I think we're a little premature just to go through with the land contour permit without, without other reviews.
Yes. All right, thanks, Carol, yeah, as you can see, we have few concerns with the site. Um. Let's go around the board for comments. This, and, uh. I'll start with Peter.
Okay, I would echo, uh, one of the things that, uh. The town engineer. One of the concerns he had, that is the type of fill that's gonna be used, but very careful about that. Their property is listed as being a fourth ward sewer, though it's not connected to the fourth ward sewer, do you know what the plan is eventually? To tap into the fourth word sewer?
Sewer actually was there. And they could cap into it readily, it would. But I don't think the sewers in that location, it's in the district.
It's in the district, I just said that.
But I don't know how. Sewer line actually is.
Have you, have you looked at it at all? And any?
I know that's just going back and forth with the county health department about existing stuff there for the existing structure on the site, so. They were in the middle of basically fact finding as of two weeks ago, so I don't know that.
As far as I know, you're, you are, you, you are part of the fourth ward capital. In other words, you have like twelve hundred benefit units to that district, but you don't appear to be attached, you know, tapped into this sewer district.
Maybe the. That to get to it. Maybe more expensive than with a single family or house. And that, that is something that. That. I should say, at this point, I don't know. With the cost of just having a single family house.
Just one, I'm just wondering if you had looked at it, that's all. Uh. We, I think we're gonna be concerned about planning. If you're gonna be clear cutting all those trees, uh. Some kind of transition plan. Otherwise, we not just don't wanna have just a bare. Gravel parking lot there.
Yeah, like how long is it gonna be there?
Yeah, wanna. Uh, would ask a question for the town engineer with regard to the. The rolled erosion controlled product that they plan to use to stabilize that slope, you know, we wanna be certain that that product. Is. Is, is the right product? For that use. Considering again that the change in elevation on the west side of that property. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's, that's the requirement for slopes over three on one, so it, that, that's the right thing to do. Um, and generally what we'll do during pre-construction, uh, we will actually ask for cut sheets of, of the material that they're gonna use to make sure that it's, it's actually the proper material.
Is that preferable to a retain for?
Uh. And that, that's, uh, it's, it's kind of a. Two different things, but yeah, I mean, for this situation, roll the rotor, roll the rose control product is, is the right, right thing to use.
That's it for me. All right, thanks, Peter, uh, Ben.
What I've heard so far, I don't have enough information to make any kind of a decision on this, so.
Great, S. And Nicole.
I don't really have any questions.
Not.
No.
No, I have nothing at this time.
Steve, no comment.
All right, I mean, my comments, I wanna echo some of Carol's, uh. Concerns about the, you know, the wetland downstream, we have to watch out for. And. We talked about sewer, I mean. Is the septic. Is there a septic field currently and where is that? And. We don't really put a fill over that, cause that becomes non-operational.
Right, we're, we're gonna look into that, uh, it's, records are hard to get right now. And so we're. We're, we wanted before we got too much more into it, at least have a general ideas to. Where we're heading, so we can get the. Plan. That provides for that, which.
Mm-hmm.
Towns meets.
And as everybody has, you know, others have said, uh, you know. We don't know how long it's gonna be in this state, we wanna make sure it's vegetated. Uh, properly, um. So it's, uh. Not an eyesore as well. Uh. And another issue is the. You know, Carol may have alluded to it, but, uh, I've looked at this myself, uh, for over time. Trying to get the, the. The greenway trails extended to northward. So we might be looking for easement or something. Uh, it, as part of this property. To get further north up to Quiet Cove from the St. Anne's. Area as well as, I think the goal is to get it up to the culinary and beyond, but.
I, I think that the proposed line is, is in the, on the Maris property. Doesn't extend here, but it's immediately adjacent.
It's on, okay. So maybe it won't be needed to go through, cause this, this Maris surrounds this country.
Oh, I think this property is far east.
It's on the east side of it, okay. Wanted to share if the trail would wind up going.
Yeah, there's, there's a basically a five hundred foot. Separation between the edge of this property. And the river, and that's, and that's that.
That matters.
That goes also up to.
You might not need that. In there, but.
Up to quite close.
Just wanna make sure nothing stops that. We are playing ahead for the trail, if that's. We're really, be. And, uh, I mean, my only other comment is I don't know what the. They're leveling it out, it's a, it's a R two A, as I say, it's. It's a three acre lot with the two acres own. So you can't subdivide it to make two houses, but you have one big house, I suppose, or an estate. Kind of thing, but other, other than that, you'd have to argue to the town board to change zoning, and that's.
Are there uses in the R two A that you're thinking of? Using this?
I don't have any idea. Wanna make it, it's not, they can't sell it the way it is. We can't take any money off of it.
But.
Well, they can't really.
It's a house.
Other than renting the house, they can't. Because it's seats, they want to make it.
It's right now, it's a rental house, so.
For college students.
And maybe.
Gonna say that, I remember going to that house once. Cause I'm a Maris student, yeah, Maris thought, so it's, it's a, yeah, it's, so it's. Not necessarily the most. Yeah.
It just may be a hard, hard sell to the town board to change his own.
Right.
Something else. Okay.
But right now, as it is, it's. Just not, can't be used for anything, what it's being used for right now.
Yeah, it's just kind of sandwiched in between two sensitive theories, the quiet could park and the insane ends.
Yeah, I didn't review this project or anything, but just hearing the discussion. It seems like. You might benefit your client by having them. Come in and talk with staff about what they would like to do with the property and getting some feedback. Before just submitting.
For the other application.
It might be a. Like cheaper, more. Idea with more progress.
Yes, yeah, I think, and I think Kristen alluded to that as well, so, uh, it's probably a good, a good idea to do. Kind of a pre-app meeting, a second.
Right, because if you're, you know, you obviously are working for your client and you, maybe he's disclosed what they, their intent is, if it's him or someone else, but if it's gonna be a commercial building. Or retail or something, you know, that requirement versus just adding a shed to the property for an existing residential home. Those are very different components to be planning for, for the future, and the building department's gonna have a hard time with saying. Yes, we're gonna sign off and be okay with this permit, and, and same goes for most people around this. Room, so it's, it's, it's not because we don't wanna work with you, it's just that we need more information about what is going on there.
Also, uh, there are not many things in the resident art, in this zoning district that are commercially allowed. So, um, if it is one of those, that would be one thing, but if it's any proposal for anything that's not allowed and might reside, require a zoning change. I wouldn't go much further before you get the temperature of the town board or the town staff at minimum.
You just.
I, I haven't heard anything about other than.
If you go doing all this, all this, I mean, it's a lot of, lot of earth moving and doing all that, if you get through all that. Without. The town board knowing, yeah. I think if it, if it's gonna be a commercial building or a restaurant or something, you're gonna need parking and access and all that, call that, uh, issues as well, so. All right. That's it for.
Okay, well, move the planning board to clarify its intent to be lead agency to coordinate with the environment, the review of the proposed project as an unlisted action. And authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent, copy of the EF and a copy of the applications that identified interested and involved agencies.
Second.
Move the seconded called question, all's in favor.
I'm fine.
Host, motion passes seven zero.
I move the planning board to defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency, direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, if would have been outlined to the following, one through twelve.
Second.
Move the seconded for call the question, all's in favor.
I.
The boat. Motion passes seven zero. And as we, that is said, or encourage you to talk to the town and, uh. Tell, seal out the town board.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess you're gathering that we're not favored doing just big land contour with no. End in sight of what. Could be coming.
All right. Next up, uh, thanks for your patience, guys, uh, get a. Presentation from the Fairview Fire Department. On their.
Oh, you need.
I'll do it.
So can you do?
Good evening, I'm Rich Tompkins, Mori Architects.
I'm Tim Gillett. George Lithgow.
So we're, uh, here tonight to present, uh, some renovations to the existing Fairview Firehouse. Um, if I could share my screen, I could have a lot some.
Go ahead.
Photographs.
Now you've been tied on space and everything up there for a while.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna start the presentation, I'm gonna kind of go through the existing firehouse and what we're proposing. I'll let chief sort of describe some of the, uh. Shortcomings of the existing firehouse, I'll say, and then we'll round off with, uh, George kind of discussing some of the, uh, secret determination and, and how we proceed to, to move forward, so.
Right, uh.
It's just the rendering, we'll get to the renderings a little bit later. Just sort of walk you through all of these. Maps that you see, uh, north is facing left, so we did rotate the plan to match our other plans here, so this is just an overview. Where the firehouse is, which I'm sure you're all aware, just a blow up of the existing site plan, so you can see the parking. Uh, on the right hand side, there's some existing parking in the curb cut. Uh, we do have a curb cut in the front for the bays. Uh, and then a curb cut on the north side for the parking lot, so there's a parking lot on the south side, a few spaces in the rear. Uh, and then a much larger parking lot on the north side. Uh, there is, uh, a couple of storage buildings in the back, uh, with a pavilion. Some views from the south side of the building along Route nine G. Again, the west side, uh. Part of this, and I'll get into this a little bit more detail, you can see some of the equipment, the chief's truck has to stay outside, which. We can discuss in a little more detail. Uh, a view from the north along nine G, so you can see that the north parking area and curb cut. Uh, and then this is, uh, a view from the street. Uh, across nine G, so you'll see in my proposal that we're looking to change the curb cuts and, and move some of the parking, we're gonna. Construct a small addition on the north side of this building. Uh, so just some of the things that we'll talk about with the existing firehouse, it's approximately eleven hundred, or eleven thousand five hundred fourteen square feet, there's two stories with a basement. Uh, the original building is constructed in about nineteen forty eight, there was a, a north addition that was put on, which was, was part of the bay addition. Um, there's a five existing apparatus bays, two of those currently store vehicles back to back, so we have to roll certain vehicles to get other vehicles and equipment out. Um. We do not have adequate sleeping quarters, uh, for the paid firemen. Um. We do not have adequate cooking or dining facilities, uh, for the paid staff. Uh, the building is limited handicap accessibility, obviously, it was built in nineteen forty eight, so, uh, basically just the first level is accessible at this point. Uh, chief vehicle stored outside, like I mentioned. Uh, again, there's inadequate, uh, fire apparatus maneuvering on site, so right now, the curb cut. And because of the proximity of the building to Route nine G, uh, all of the fire apparatus, when they come back from call, have to back up. Into the site and back up into the base. Uh, so some of this addition will help alleviate that. In the proposed firehouse, we're looking at a three thousand four hundred. Square foot, one story addition, which will be strictly for the apparatus, and that will be on the north side. Uh, we're gonna eliminate the stacked apparatus, uh, and reconfigure the interior space to take advantage of that space for the lack of space that we have currently in the building.
Okay.
Um. All the fire equipment. All the fire equipment will now be able to be stored in bays again. Chief's car right now in the winter has to be cleared off before using. Or periodically cleaned off so that we can leave quickly. We will be able to provide adequate sleeping quarters for both male and female. Fire personnel, which currently is issues with that. Adequate cooking and dining facilities. Improved fire apparatus maneuvering again, we'll be able to pull onto the site and maneuver the apparatus into the bays. On the site rather than on nine G. The entire building will be handicap accessible. With that, we part of the existing bay area will be converted. To a first floor meeting area, training area, that will be accessed directly from the front entrance. It'll help us reconfigure the interior of the building so that we can separate the firematic side of. The building from the public side of the building. In addition to that, we will be putting in a elevator that will allow handicap accessibility to the existing second floor meeting room, which currently has no accessibility. And accessibility to the basement. That was additional first floor training. We're not proposing any change in staff or services that are provided here. Again, we're just, we don't have the space and I'm sure. Chief would be willing to take anybody on a tour to to show you the cramped conditions that are currently there. With bathrooms, the only shower bathroom area opening into the kitchen dining area, so I'm sure you can all imagine what that's like. The we're gonna have some minimal additional impervious coverage. The existing parking area will be re reconfigured and moved on site. And the area that is currently impervious will. Be part of that addition that we're adding. And again, the services and activities remain the same. The building will comply with obviously building code standards. Again, it was built in nineteen forty eight, so we're gonna try to bring a lot of those things up to code. Including the installation of a sprinkler. And that'll help with some of the other motion standards with exhaust and things like that with the trucks.
Maybe smoke detector.
Smoke detectors. So this is. This is just the survey of the existing property, which basically saw with the over overhead view. Previous. So this is the proposed site plan, so you can see here the existing building. And this shaded area would be this three thousand square thirty four hundred square foot addition. So you can see that we do have some areas for the apparatus just outside of the bays. This would relocate that. North curb cut to be more in line with the with 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 the intersection across the street. Obviously, this needs to be reviewed with D O T. We're trying to get in contact with them to review that. The existing curb cut where the bays are, because we will be basically reducing two bays in that existing area, we'll be able to also reduce that curb cut. And again, the apparatus that'll be there, we're looking at the. Chief car and two ambulants, so the fire engines will all be on the north side edition, so it'd be much easier to maneuver those vehicles in that area. So we have two views here. Obviously, the one on the top is sort of a southwest view. The existing brick and canopy. Would basically remain the canopy. We would probably refinish that into this black color. You can see the red stripe here is. To mimic what we are applying to the addition and we'll get to that side. And then we would be replacing the entrance doors with full glass doors. And then the the bottom view here is the 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 addition, again, kind of copy that canopy that is currently on the building. Mac the brick veneer on the lower portion of this, and then this red would be a vertical metal. Again, we would add some glass to to brighten up some of the bays and the doors would also have glass in them. As far as the building. I I I think that covers everything that we were looking at trying to accomplish, and I'll let chief sort of explain why.
So basically, what we have is we have a bunk room that's not really. Made to fit for with four people, then we have to have two bunks downstairs or another rooms, one. In a what we call the dugout or the recreation room and one in our. Classroom, as you know, we talked about, we've hired our first female firefighter. So. We have that going on. And then just. The way everything is where the ambulances are right now, because the original buildings what housed the fire trucks. At one time, so now all the apparatuses are getting bigger and bigger.
Yep.
So trying to house them is not the easiest thing. And then just the day to day operations are a lot busier than what they used to be as. Mister Welty sees me quite a bit sometimes, a bit different. Growth that goes on in our area and then just to support it, our public department and just the day to day operations of the ambulance and the fire calls. Who keep increasing, so. Amount of equipment and then. A big thing now for us with the safety and the preemptive cancer bill that's passed in the law, because everybody knows our. In our line of work, it's not if you're gonna get cancer, it's when. So then what they're talking about is deconning before we put them back out on the street. We only have one shower, that's probably. If twenty four by twenty four, that's a lot. I like we said before, you all can come and. Come walk through and I'll show you everything. We're looking, try to expand that. So while I have one shower and we have to get try to get six people or however many people decon before I throw them back out on the street. So it's. Time consuming and we're hiring people back to cover them while they do this. And of course, like Rich said, it's right there next to the kitchen. It's right next to the stove where you cook in the table. It sits right behind you, so all that contaminants are going back and forth. Not only in the body there, but where our gear extractor is, that's right where every where the locker rooms. So.
Not ideal.
No. So like I said, if you have any questions or you'd like to see just contact and I'll take you through. Show you.
So I know it's no, it's been trouble up there for a long time. It considered even a that whole more flat making a new firehouse.
Yes, we.
Sure, that was pretty expensive to.
Yes, I think that would be a base.
It was expensive six years ago. It's probably fifty percent more by now. So the fire district. Is very sensitive to taxpayer issues. It's very sensitive to firefighter issues. And they have come up with a plan to do renovations that. Bring it current. It's not an expansion. It's basically. Bringing this up to code and to billing code, fire code. And to ocean regulations, so. My job here is you've heard the what we're doing. You've heard why we're doing it, and I am to. Try to help you understand how we can do it. And by we, it's you know, we we need to work with the town, obviously. The fire district is a government, but. We need to work cooperatively and. I can tell you the the board has been very impressed with the cooperation that has. Been shown by the town over the last. Five or six years, so we want to continue that cooperative spirit, work with you guys, work with the town board. As necessary to get this done. The experience that I want to bring to you tonight is I don't do a lot of fire district work. I'm not what Tim calls a firehouse lawyer. I'm a land use attorney by that's my primary trade. I've been doing that for thirty five years. I've done a number. Of E I S's, I've done many negative declarations, type one actions. I've done a lot of stuff. But one of the things I'm most proud of stuff is working with the Wallkill Fire District. In the Hamlet of Wallkill.
Yep.
Town of Shangam. To put a new firehouse. On a corner of what is the board in the state historic type type one property. So it's, it's if you've ever been over that way, it's a lovely looking building. It was designed. To really reflect the themes and atmosphere of the board and state. Properties and I think the town is very happy with it. I know the fire district is very happy with it. And one of the things that made it possible. Because this any fire district project that requires financing requires a referendum.
Yep.
And the. Every fire district is sensitive to that. The Fairview Fire District is very sensitive to it.
Highest in the state, unfortunately, too many.
It is.
Too many, yeah.
There's been some debate. There may be one that's higher, but it's definitely the highest in Dutch discount. Is renowned for that and they really would like to change it. And and the town is trying to help them do that. We hope it will work. But what we did with the Wallkill Fire District is something that I think we can do here. Which is essentially. A preliminary review of the project to determine whether environmental impact statement will be required. Determination of significance. And then. Once that's done, because that's necessary for the referendum. So once that determination is made. Presumably, given the limited nature of the activities, the limited amount of. You know, basically what we're doing is letting out the belt notch. To make it easier to accommodate. The firefighters.
Is there a certain timeframe that's rather, does the referendum have to be at November voting time?
It is either if it's within thirty days, I believe it has to be at the referendum. One of the district's concerns is working through this process so we can set the referendum. The manner that will be. Best for the voters. You know. The election is one possibility. The timeframe talking. To the board is is probably four to six months. Because you guys have to conclude seeker. The board then has to go through the process of. Working with bond council to. Set out the resolution, adopt the resolution. Set the referendum. That process takes probably two to three months. That's what it took in Wallkill.
Yeah, I didn't know what what timeline you like to guess in constructing.
The the board would like to get this done before Christmas.
Do you really like the start construction next week?
I'm sure. All right, yeah. Idea of your action. You have any comments, Mike?
No, I mean, George really, I think, laid it out. Where what we're trying to do is ultimately this will require site plan approval, architectural approval. We'd like to. Go part of the way there, just enough that we can answer the questions that we need to answer in order to achieve a point of comfort with. Seek the seeker. We've had some meetings already with like with Andy and and and. With with the architects and engineers to talk about what. Information would be needed for that. And so hopefully, you know. We can get there for maybe by their next submission in in July, if if that's workable, but what we want to do tonight was just. Circulate for lead agency, so we can get that process started. And so when they do, when they are ready to come back.
Yeah.
The summer, that we were in position to.
Get it moving.
To get it moving, so.
That sounds good. See, I remember some kind of a drainage pipe concern when we were looking at the. New firehouse up there. Like like they weren't sure where it was coming from, machine.
Yeah, it was in the backyard, so. Hard for me to remember that far.
That was.
Oh, but I did have some conversations with their 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 engineer. About what we would need for seeker, so if they're aware of what we're looking for and I I expect that they'll be able to provide.
Sounds good. Let's go around if anybody has any comments.
I three comments. One is I've been to your firehouse. And I would have to tell you, you do an extraordinary job under very difficult circumstances. Number two is couldn't have picked a better counsel than Mr. Lithgow. See his work. And I can tell you, he's very, very competent, very, very knowledgeable in this this area. I wanted to ask you a question. You have estimated value of eight point four million, said. Red picture.
Right, how many have a cop?
No, that's.
But.
Said a ballpark ballpark.
We tried to build a really. Yeah, some. Some of this is hard to estimate. And the current bidding fund. Estimate.
Been there, done that.
Yeah, thank you. Good luck.
Ben, for me.
This sounds like a much moving project. Like to see if we go to where it is, so everything can, we can do. Help you guys.
We go.
I don't have any comments.
Firefighter on the corners to our community, so whatever we can do and help.
I have no comments.
No comment.
Yep, that's nothing further that I have, I guess I've. Said, I just said, no. Notes needed and. Wish you luck with the project.
I move the planning board to clear its intent to be lead agency to coordinate with the environmental review. Post project as an unlisted action, authorize the planning department circulation of notice of said intent. Copy of the E F and a copy of the application to the identified involved and interested agencies.
Second.
Move the second for lead H C, call the question holes in favor.
I.
Close, you should pass the seven zero.
Move the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency.
Second.
Coated second, call the question holes in favor. Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. So a couple more items here. Like.
Food trucks. Sure, yep, so the, as you know, the. Town has been working through a number of code amendments since we have adopted the conference of plan update. Code update committee has developed, in this case, a set of. Amendments related to a few different things. This the immediate referral is for the food trucks local law. Right now, the way the code is set up, there are two chapters in the code. One. It relates to circuses and carnivals and the other relates to peddling and soliciting. Within the peddling and soliciting, there's. Little bit of discussion about canteen trucks, but there's really nothing that describes today's food truck. And the kind of way the food trucks have become part of the, you know, the culture, if you will. And so the the town clerk has for. A while now been asking, you know, could we update the code and and have something food trucks? At the same time. You know, we could update the peddling and soliciting section, pull the food, little bit of food truck stuff that's in there out. And then the circuses and and carnivals is really what they they've been using to do all kinds of outdoor events. So you know, when Basser has. An outdoor event or something like that. It's under the circuses and carnival's code section, so that needed to be updated as well. So we took these two chapters. Split them now into three. The one that you have before you is really the one related to food trucks only, because that's the only one that impacts. Zoning in some respects, there's inter interface with the zoning chapter. The other two aren't really, don't have any interface with zoning, but I gave them to you anyway, so you can read all three together. Because they kind of, as as you probably saw, they all kind of interrelated in different ways. So anyway. That's that's really the, you know, the overview right now. You know, this would give. The town the ability to, first of all, license food trucks that operate here, so that the town clerk can. You know, make sure that they've gotten their proper Department of Health inspection, their fire inspection and so forth. And then there are provisions in there for. When zoning administrator can permit the use of food trucks on private property. And in certain cases, if it's going to be a more permanent kind of fixture, they can come and have a planning board review for site plan. But, you know, we've already gotten, for example, in Hudson Heritage, right? We we know that there's an area that they. Dedicated for food truck use. You know, that could be something that's a little bit more common, I think, in in the future. For if if people want to plan ahead, otherwise they can just come and get a permit for a use that's. More temporary in nature. So anyway, that's that's it. Code update committee has been working on this for a while. Planning, excuse me, the town board will be holding its public hearing on this beginning next week on May twenty fourth. So we are looking for a recommendation from the planning board to send back to the town board.
All right, sounds good. Do you have any comments on it, Lisa? Since you have.
No. No, I think we're, I mean, we're pretty happy with what's come out of this. And you know, Felicia seems pretty happy with what's come out of this. So I think it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Oh, I did want to point one other thing out. We just, in fact, it's not included here. But we we did make a few minor refinements to the to the food truck section in response to some of the county's comments, and we sent them on to the town board. They basically, what we were able to do with the county, they've been very helpful to us in a few instances recently when we've been working on these code updates. It's because they have mapping GIS capability. You know, we've we've asked them to help us understand how some of the distance requirements, for example, would impact these uses. And we, in 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 essence, we we realized that the five hundred feet that we were talking about in the initial draft was 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 a little high. And so we worked on that and we we've come back with something six two hundred and we defined the measurements. And
Okay, that was a question went into five hundred feet.
Yeah, so we we've worked through some of those things. Obviously, it'll be the town board, you know, we'll have to decide what whether they're comfortable with what we've come up with, but we think that that makes makes it more useful, makes better sense. I just want to. Two hundred is what it replaces the five hundred. Yeah.
Question?
Yep.
Although we're not here. This is not a food truck question. It's tightly entitled.
Okay.
One fifty one eleven extensions. A for any person soliciting can have or selling for any charitable or nonprofit organization. Would that include religious organizations? Doesn't really spell it out.
I believe that it does, and I'm not sure that that's a change from what we have in code.
It doesn't mention religious.
Well, they're usually both charitable and nonprofit, so I think they could fall under either.
It could, but why not put them in there specifically, including the charitable, nonprofit or religious organizations? Why not just spell it out instead of, you know, leading up to a guesswork? I mean, because they they're the people that come to my house, they are predominantly religious organizations. I mean, I haven't seen anybody selling pots and cans, you know. I was at my front door.
No encyclopedia.
No mud on the carpet, it sure still your vacuum.
Vacuum is like filler brush man.
I mean, I suppose that could be, which section is that again?
It is one fifty one eleven extensions and it's aged four.
Yep.
I just include the word religious or not for profit or religious. So that really squish her.
All right. Anything else, Peter?
No, thank you. Other than I thought was very well written. I think you covered all the bases and never really find out till you get the first challenge. Whether you got everything in there, but I mean, that's pretty complete. There's a lot of words.
Yeah, we have a pretty good team, you know, Lisa's, you know, not too bad. And Michelle Greig, who's been working with us as well, has been excellent. So, yeah, we're.
And then anything? Any comments from? Anyone else comments?
So if you have a situation where you have like a semi-permanent, say it's like a seasonal thing, and you're having something every week and you're gonna have a broccoli every week, it's gonna be in the same spot.
Yeah.
Does the truck have to get the permit or does the landowner get the permit?
Landowner.
It's like one and done. And it would apply to any trucks that are going.
Yeah, as long as they're licensed.
Yeah, they need their license.
In that kind of a situation, though, they plan to do that year year rather than applying for the permit. They they might be better off better served by just doing it as part of site plan.
Yeah.
And then not having to do the permit and the permit fee year after year.
Which we did up at the.
And as we discussed the other day, if someone did want get a permit and extend beyond the nine o'clock, they can still do that when they fire. Correct, Mike?
Well, that that was related. That was the question I had, because it's nine nine P M. It's the closed hour.
Right. I mean, as part of a site plan, I suppose you could. I think we wanted to keep it.
Well, what if there's an event going on or something?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. If it's part of an event, it's completely separate that. So, yeah. If you're an event, you're not, it's not the same, that's a separate permit, and you can have licensed food trucks as part of an event. And so there's an event that the town board has approved that goes till eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock. Not have to close now. Right, they don't have to get a permit for that. They're part of the event as long as they're licensed.
Okay, that thanks for clarifying all that.
Yeah, all right. There's a lot of ways that this can. You can see how these work together and how.
Yeah.
It takes. Hopefully, we got it.
Comments, anyone else? Final comments on it?
Great.
I in that case, I move we planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding the adoption of the proposed town code amendment. We eat food trucks.
And would I can I include in there the suggestion that Peter made about?
Yes, I was gonna add that. Yeah, and we we also agree with the two hundred foot. At five hundred foot was too restrictive and how it also works.
A second.
Peters. Moves in second, it called the question holes in favor.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes seven zero. All right. Couple more things to finish up. Time extensions, one Dutch Avenue. Then with the playing board grant to ninety day time extensions. Moving the approval expiration date from May twentieth, two thousand twenty three to November sixteenth, two thousand twenty three.
Second.
Move the second, it called the question, all's in favor.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes seven zero. And central Hudson Nets Corners, I moved planning board grant a six month time extension, moving the approval expiration date, May twenty first, two thousand twenty three. November twenty first, two thousand twenty three.
Us second.
So the second question, all's in favor.
My ear.
Both. Anybody chime in if you have any comments on these expert? And last one was Central Hudson KM line. And with the playing board grant a one year time extension, moving the approval expiration date from May nineteenth, two thousand twenty three to May twentieth, two thousand twenty four.
Second.
Moved in second, it called the question, all's in favor.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes seven to zero. Any other business the board wants to bring up?
I'd like to make one comment. And like everybody in this word should be proud of the way that the McDonald's in Hudson Plaza has turned out and it's nothing doesn't look anything like it was as was originally proposed. And we had a lot to do with that. And it's actually looking, you know, like pretty good.
Yep, it's a nice looking building.
I move that we end tonight's meeting.
Second. Move the second and call the question, all's in favor.
Aye.
I posed. Okay, we all agree.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Have a good night.